As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order, ask you to stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we thank you so much for the blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do. Under the consent agenda, I'm asking that we please pull the December 21st closed session and January 4th regular meeting. I apologize, I was unable to get to those. I will have them for the next meeting. Additionally, we are pulling off item 8B development agreements, and that will be rescheduled for the first meeting in February. And that's all I am aware of.
Thank you, ma'am. So up next will be your consent agenda.
Move we approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under old business is the town hall parking lot expansion utility undergrounding.
The item before you tonight is a follow-up to discussion that was held in council discussion on December 21st regarding undergrounding of the existing utility, overhead utilities through the parking lot. Just a brief recap, on those poles, there's Town Electric, Town Fiber, Century Link, and Spectrum. At the December 21st meeting, town manager gave an update, and we were looking at somewhere in the round, round figure of 130,000 to move the electric, the fiber, the spectrum, and Century Link. At the time, we didn't really know what that meant for our general contractor that's out there now, Daniels Incorporated, as far as any additional cost associated with the delay on the project if Spectrum and Century Link were slow to move. And we were kind of assuming and looking at probably a four to six month addition to that parking lot. Since then, we've had several meetings with the contractor and got some more information. We've got the specific Spectrum and Century Link agreements. As they are right now, they do not specify a timeframe as to how quickly that they would get the, their utilities out of the way. We think we can press them and move them along pretty quickly, but that is still an unknown that we don't have at this time. One other thing to note, too, if we proceed with moving and removing the poles, we would recommend a slight design change. So we're factoring in any additional costs associated with that. After those discussions with the contractor and keeping all that in mind as far as any change orders for the general contractor, we anticipate that total project to really be around that 150,000 mark as far as the total cost to underground all those utilities through there. We still believe four to six months is appropriate, kind of worst-case scenario. The contractor is certainly open to discussions, and as we get into this, understanding really what options may be available to us to expedite that, to coordinate it. Upon any approval to proceed, we certainly will have all those conversations with the different utilities, with Dale Meldon's group, and looking to see what creative solutions we can find to really keep everyone working and keep this moving such that we get the parking lot opened back up in a timely manner. So we believe there's things out there, but again, still kind of worst-case scenario. Got to still factor in that four to six months and approximately 150,000 to do it. There was some discussion at the last meeting regarding a budget amendment. Since we've been digging in the budget, working with Dale and Robert Mackay, we do not, a budget amendment is not necessary at this time. Funds are available in the electric enterprise for this work, and so there's no budget amendment that's needed at this time. If something does come up, I understand there's some reimbursements, resolutions that are already at play and at work that could be, this could be factored into if need be. So with that, you know, we would, excuse me, here. There we go. The specific action that we request of council is to authorize staff to proceed with undergrounding the overhead utilities through the parking lot, and that includes any change orders to the existing contractor, the agreements with Spectrum and Century Link, and the work associated with Dale's group to get the fiber and the electric underground. So with that, I'll take any questions or discussion.
I got one for you.
Yes, sir.
Why can't Spectrum or Century Link give us a time? Are they not capable of doing that, or?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Dale, if you can help me with this one, Dale, you've had some.
Mr. Bun, we tried to get a timeframe from them, and they just, they've got a contract. Spectrum has said that they would try to expedite their work as soon as they could. We asked for a timeframe, but they just, they said they couldn't give it to us right now because of their workload and pending work they had on them at the time. Century Link basically said the same thing. So till we can give them the green light, I feel like they're gonna get on it and work on, you know, get the work going as fast as they can. Obviously, I'm committed to get it done, you know, my, the electrical part as fast as I can. But, I mean, that's, I know that's kind of a vague answer, but that's the best I can give you.
Thanks, Dale.
I'll also add, too, we, your next agenda item is about the Second Street parking, and one of the dates that's in there is a evaluation date is June the 15th. So we've already tried to anticipate that this project may slide out to June as we look at Second Street parking. We'd hope it would be over in March or April, but, but we have provisions with the parties just to make sure June 15th is our evaluation date if the parking lot is not finished.
Mr. Barrett, could you go back two slides, please? When you say additional contractor costs are unknown at this time, what, what sort of things could you possibly anticipate with respect to that? Not necessarily cost, but other items that would necessitate additional contractors?
Certainly. So for, just a little clarification, so this was at the time, we had not had any significant discussions with the contractor Daniels at the time. So we really didn't know what the change orders were gonna look like as far as, because we do anticipate them putting conduit in. And that is included, when I say the total project in the next slide is around 150,000, that includes any anticipated additional cost. We've been able to try to gauge that, but that includes if there's any remobilization, if there's any delays to his equipment sitting idle while Spectrum or Century Link is onsite working. We've tried to incorporate those, but those would be some of the unknowns that we've really tried to, tried to get a grasp on, and we do feel like this project can be done in that 150,000. But it's things of that nature. Equipment sitting idle just because it can't work, delays to the project if he has to remobilize, anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Anyone else? When you mentioned there could be some type of design change, any examples or thoughts on that?
Yeah, sure. I don't, I don't have a picture with me now, but the, the parking lot, the way it was laid out in the beginning assumed that those poles would stay and would remain, and so some of the parking islands were put in a, in a position basically around those poles. It's not the most symmetrical design right now, but if we pull those, my recommendation would we, would be that we make those symmetrical, bump those islands such that everything is symmetric, and we have a nice parking lot where those islands are. It was just the original design was to those poles. If we're removing them, let's just look at it and have everything symmetrical.
Gotcha. Good.
Three or four spaces up. Unfortunately, we don't get any more spaces. We looked at that, we tried to see if there's some way we could get additional spaces, but we don't, we would just be shifting those islands three or four so that everything's centered and symmetrical.
Right. Well, I think it's a very good investment from the enterprise fund. You know, those funds are monies that are collected from electricity, and it can only be spent on electrical, can't fund stuff at Park and Recreation or wherever. So I think that's a good, you know, and I know it's gonna postpone us four to six months or whatever, but we only get one time to do this, and it would be, it would be cost prohibitive to try to do it later. So I'm in favor.
You need a motion?
I think he requested a motion to, for, for staff to proceed.
I make a motion, we approve to move forward with this project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Motion carries. Okay, up next is the no parking and loading zone portion of Second Street.
Rich Capola, deputy town manager. This is a continuation of the item we spoke about at the December 21st and the January 4th meeting. Coming out of the last meeting, it was requested that staff meet with the local stakeholders along Second, or, excuse me, along Second Street to discuss the different options that had been considered and come up with hopefully a workable solution, which I do believe we were able to come to. We had representatives from my girlfriend's place, the salon across the street, Mr. Black's family, as well as from, from the church. We met last Monday, I believe it was, out there to kind of look at everything during a peak time as well, just so we could kind of really understand what the challenges were along the corridor. So coming out of that meeting, I think most of those that were in attendance were in agreement that the Phase 1A or Alternate A, I believe that we've been calling it, the initial alternate that was proposed at the December meeting is the preferred with that being a phased approach where the south side of the road indicated on the exhibit on the screen, in yellow essentially would be converted to a commercial loading zone. That's a 30-minute loading zone for passengers and goods. With that, two caveats to that, in terms of the church's operation, things like weddings and funerals with 24 hours notice, they would be allowed to infringe upon that to be able to perform those different services, as well as there is a, there was the discussion of the accessibility, accessible space at the intersection. The town is actually going to stripe one of the parking spaces in the small parking lot between us, between the Clayton Center and the church for use as restricted parking so that we can kind of replace that space that was previously eliminated. With that, our intent would be to put this in place, some here with town staff, you know, town forces go out and paint the curves and put the signage up here over the next couple of weeks, have it in place for a few months. That'll give time for the parking lot project that you just heard the update on to get completed, and we can then at that point determine whether or not any additional restrictions need to be done along the corridor, corridor on the north side of the street. So I think I touched, with that, town staff is going to be asked to not park in some of the prime parking spaces that the businesses like to utilize or would like to utilize. Obviously, we have other opportunities as well as when the new parking lot opens up, we hope that most staff will not have to use the on-street options. And the church has actually had some discussions internally regarding their queuing and some other opportunities that, the short-term changes that they're making at this point to go ahead and improve that, as well as, once the parking lot is open, they're gonna look at some other potential opportunities that may free up that space as well. So before you tonight is a request to go ahead and modify the ordinance to establish the loading zone on the south side of the road from the angled parking that is existing along the front door of town hall down to the intersection with the two caveats of that's Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, excuse me, I don't think I said that initially. That'd be a loading zone, Monday through Friday, Friday, 8 to 5, with the caveat that during certain ceremonies or certain funerals and weddings essentially, the church could request an alteration to that. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, Ed, we are gonna reevaluate it by June 15th.
Sorry. Yes. Yeah, June 15th was the agreed-upon date. Again, we feel like that gives time for the parking lot project, excuse me, the parking lot to reopen and for traffic and parking patterns to normalize.
All right. Mr. Granus.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from the business owner to see if he's in agreement with, with the changes, and also from our fire chief, Chief Barbie.
Chief, can we start with you?
Lee Barbie, Fire Chief, Town of Clayton. We participated in a meeting with the business and the church. I had no problem with what we're trying to do.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Holder.
I support the amendment change, but I feel like it's a band-aid and not a solution. The solution is the traffic flow and the direction the traffic is going. I'll wait to see how the department, after the department, parking lot's complete, and we'll take another look.
Yeah, it kind of seems to me like it's a kind of a phased thing instead of just, I understand. All right. Anyone else? Your name for the record and your business.
Paul Black, co-owner of my girlfriend's place. The only thing I didn't hear that was part of the agreement, and I'm sure it's a simple oversight, was on our side of what is a driveway access that's not a driveway to the side of our property, we were gonna remove the yellow stripe just on that one side to give one additional parking, just help extend one additional parking spot in front of our, our lot. Other than that, thank you to everyone involved that has worked with us to help find a, a solution. I appreciate all the effort from everyone.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, just to clarify, the driveway on the right side, about halfway up on the image as shown where there's kind of two red marks on each side, that's actually the driveway for the yellow house. There is actually a driveway that is not utilized by their business just to the north, kind of covered underneath where that tree is. We showed a green line through there because we will be removing that restriction as noted.
Awesome. All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll turn it over to the council for their discussion. Thank you, Rich.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-01-08.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, next under new business is the return check policy amendment.
Good evening, council, mayor, and game utilities and billing director. Haven't brought this before you in a lot of years, I believe it was 2016 when we talked about this before, but asking for an update to our return check policy, which includes drafts, any insufficient fund that someone may give us. We currently, after two returns, we don't allow any further payments by check or draft. And we are definitely seeing a few more return checks these days, not, not a tremendous amount, but a few more, and would like to kind of revisit the policy. What I am proposing, and I did some research, you know, in the area, what other municipalities are doing, and kind of the consensus is after two returns, drafts or checks, is putting a stop on those payments for five years, and then after five years, allowing the checks to be written again, that we would accept those types of payments. So I was just asking for an update on this, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions or comments?
I do need a motion, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. It does say that. My apologies. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance, well, resolution 2021-02.
Second. And a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Up next is the AFG grant.
Good evening, mayor, council, Matt Sutton, deputy chief, Clayton Fire Department. In the past, we've been good about funding alternative funds for grants and stuff for projects. We have, if you recall, last year, we came to y'all with the assistance of firefighters to grant to do our ventilation system in the bays.
Yep.
With COVID, it was a little delayed. We were approved for it, so we were awarded the money, so we're looking at March completion date. The grant has opened again, so we're looking again to apply for the grant with y'all's approval to do sprinkler systems in both of the stations. When the stations were built, we didn't have staff in full-time, we had part-time volunteers, nobody was living there, so with all the changes, there's somebody there 24/7, you know, 365 days a year, so we feel it's necessary to bring our building up to code and the safety of our guys, so. we feel it's necessary to bring our building up to code and the safety of our guys, so we again are asking for your approval to move forward with this grant, which has a deadline of February 4th. In the past, just like this one, it's going to be a 10% match, and we're approximately probably looking at 175,000 to outfit both stations, so the town would have around 17,500 to match on that.
We've been successful with these grants before.
We've been awarded the Safer Grant and AFG in the past two years, and we think we got a good shot to get another AFG grant, and again, we're going to apply for another Safer Grant for staffing this year as well, with y'all's approval.
That's awesome.
So Chief taught us, you know, if we have a problem, bring a solution to the table. This is our solution to help, you know, takes home the financial burden off.
That's great. Every little bit helps. All right, questions or comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the staff proceed with the application for the AFG grant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah. On a grant roll, how about library grant?
Mayor and Council, I'm Joy Garrettson, Library Director. It's good to see y'all. I do have some visual aids, so you're not going to be in here too long with me. So we are in grant application season. I have a couple of grants that I'm applying for. The first is a State Library LSTA Planning Grant. It's, our strategic plan is up, it's time for us to create a new one, and so we are going to apply for a planning grant through the State Library. They actually have grants just for this purpose, and we have already got a lot of information about the library from the grant that we got a couple of years ago to do the space and services need assessment. So I've been talking to Karen Dash, she's the library consultant, and asked her to consider that and the quote that she gave us. She has done a lot of work around the state, she's worked with the State Library, she's worked with a couple of other libraries, including Harnett County, I know that director really well. She spoke super highly of her, said she's really professional and easy to work with. She gave me a great quote, great turnaround, good communication. So the total cost of this grant, if we get the highest rate, the highest amount of service from her, so that would be in-person service, kind of depending on what happens in the next few months, if we had to dial it back to all be virtual, she's given me a price for that too, but I'm going to go ahead and ask for the full amount. The total amount would be 11,490. State Library would cover 75% of that, and our cost would be 25% of that, which is about $2,900. So pretty decent price for this grant. So that's the first one that we're applying for. Mainly, they'd be talking to staff and administration about our plans going forward for the next five years, just those basic goals that you do on a regular basis. And then the next grant is super exciting. It's a National Endowment of the Arts Big Read Grant. So NEA Midwest advertises this grant, we apply by the end of January, we find out in April if we've gotten it, and then the grant period is from September through October. So with this grant, we would choose one book to read across Clayton, and then along with reading that book, we have a lot of activities. We do book discussions, we do presentations, like panel discussions, lectures, films, that kind of thing. And then we have to do two community engagement projects that respond creatively to this book, so it could be an art exhibition or theatrical performance. So the library is choosing, so they give you a certain number of books that you can choose from, and the book that we've chosen is The House on Mango Street. I did take out like 50 little notes so it wouldn't look too crazy, but this is a book by Sandra Sisneros about a girl coming of Asian Chicago. She's, her parents are Mexican immigrants, and it just kind of follows her throughout a couple of years. As you can see, it's short, it's got short, easy chapters, it's very visually pleasing, like, not pleasing, I guess, visually, like when you read it, you can see it. And I've actually spoken to the agent, Sandra Sisneros's agent, had some really great conversations, and I've already got positive responses from a number of partners. So I'll be working with the Clayton Center, I'll be working with Carolina Youth Theater, they're going to do some workshops and do a dramatic reading of some of the chapters. I've been working with Clayton Visual Arts, will also get workshops from them, and they will do a big art show at the end of the grant period, where we invite people to paint or draw or do whatever kind of art to go along with the book. I've been speaking with teachers from Cooper, West Clayton and Clayton High School about doing this in the classrooms, doing some great involvement there. I've been talking to the Racial Equality Coalition about having a panel discussion, Joko Writers Group is going to do some workshops. Clayton Farm and Community Markets already promised me four spots at the market. I've been working with Quail Ridge Books, so I'm really excited about this. And one of the reasons is that, so as I mentioned, the main character, her parents are Mexican, and I think that this book will be a really great way for us to reach out to the Hispanic people in our community that we aren't always seeing in our, I mean, we see a good number of people who speak Spanish in the library, but we don't have programming that is so easily relatable. And so one of our goals, I think, moving forward, is really going to be to get all of Clayton involved in the programs that we do. And I know especially with the teachers that I've been speaking with, the books that we're going to read, having the Spanish content in them, we're going to get some of the books in English and some in Spanish, so people can get free books in Spanish to read. We have a companion title for little kids that's called Hairs, Pelitos, about the hair in this one character's families, and it's a bilingual book, so half of it's in English, half is in Spanish. Makes this really great way for us to reach everybody who's in town. So, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. The grant awards are from $5,000 to $20,000, and the grant provides up to 50% of the costs. So we've been, you can make up a lot of the costs with in-kind donations, and so the current estimates have us at roughly $10,000 from NEA that would pay for author visits and books, and then about $5,200 in in-kind contributions, and then $4,800 for director-donated costs. So that would be the money that we put up upfront. I am still working on getting some donations, I'm working with my friends at the library group, but hopefully, the biggest cost from the town would be that in-kind donation, and I've worked with Scotty to figure out how we can get the use of the theater, get the use of the classrooms and the staff time. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if you want me to read the book to you, we can do that later on a Zoom meeting, I'd be happy to help.
How's your Spanish?
Um, it's not great, but it could get better.
I think it's a great book, it's English and Spanish, but I would only be able to do the English part.
Well, this one's easy, you could get, I could get you through this one.
All right, that sounds good. No, thank you so much for the updating, good luck with the grants. I think this council is, you know, we're all so thankful when staff people are looking for other revenue streams, so we can do really good things for everybody, so this definitely checks that box. So questions or comments from council? Mr. Grantis.
Joy, one of the things that I appreciate so much about you is your creativity, but something else that I've probably not mentioned to you is your enthusiasm. I can tell that you live and you breathe this, and I really want you to know that I, and I'm sure all of the council, really appreciates that, especially in these times, especially in these times. And, you know, for you to go out and do the research that you do and to come up with these types of grant opportunities, I just want you to know that I'm very impressed, and I really want to thank you for your commitment to what you're doing.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Thompson.
I want to echo what Mr. Grantis said and just tell you that I appreciate you being the leader that you are, and always bringing us innovative ways to involve all of the community. And you started when the pandemic hit, you and your staff were right on top of it with innovative ways that the community could stay involved in the library, and I like that you, everything you do, it seems like centers around how you can reach every bit of the population. It can be the older population, senior citizens, it can be the youth, you've got something for everybody at the library, and you want to, you encourage people of all walks of life to come to the library and to read, and I think that's great.
Thanks. I think we need a motion to go along with this.
I do too.
Okay.
I'm going to give you kudos, but I'll make a motion.
You can give me that, I'm sorry.
That's kudos she wants to hear.
God, I just want to get that.
Make a motion to approve for staff to proceed with the application. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Good job, Joy.
Right, thanks.
You are standing for the COVID update too, right? You're standing for the COVID update too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You're not going to leave me up here by myself on that one?
I believe, yes.
You did the slides.
All right, up next on the agenda is the uniform guidance policy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're asking council to approve a resolution that will allow the town to incorporate the uniform procurement, the uniform guidance procurement standards into our existing town purchasing policy. The uniform guidance requirements were effective January 1st, 2018. They apply to both purchase and service contracts and construction repair contracts. The town, up until this point, on formal written contracts, we've incorporated those UG as an addendum to the formal written contracts. So now, as we're doing, is this formally making it a part of our purchasing policy. There's some differences with the UG procurement requirements. The thing here, so basically, when you're given federal funds involved, you have to file the most restrictive set of rules. So when we get to the purchasing and service contracts, you can see that you have state rules, and pretty much our local policy, purchasing policy files the state rules, and the middle section is your uniform guidance rules with federal funding, and the most restrictive is as far right there. So what you can see is that with the most restrictive, that you have to file the small purchase requirement between the $10,000 and $90,000 range, and then between 90 and 250, you have to do a formal bidding process, because the state policy is more restrictive than the federal policy. And then when you get over to construction repair contracts, it's basically the same thing, except when you get up into, above the 250 level, between 250 and 500, the state allows informal bidding, where UG, if you're using federal funds, you got to do a sealed bid, because the, so you're restricted to file on the most restrictive, which the sealed bid, you're going to have to use the sealed bid process, if federal funding's involved between 250 and 5, and anything over 500,000, you have to use the formal bidding in conjunction with the sealed bid. And then the UG allows sole source contracts, there's some things that tell you, you know, what the, when it's allowed, if it's similar kind of state sole source. The last slide here, there's some exceptions where we have state exceptions that are not allowed under the uniform guidance procurement requirements, and those are piggybacking, you can't use a group purchasing program unless that co-op qualifies and is an interlocal agreement, and the contracts within that purchasing program work procured in compliance with the uniform guidance requirements. You won't be able to use state contracts unless the state contracts have been bid in accordance with UG requirements. So basically, what it amounts to, you got to do a lot of administration here and check if you're going to use, if you're going to try to use one of the state exceptions, you're going to have to validate with your, with the grant or agency in conjunction with any state contracts to make sure they're complying. So other than that, that's pretty much it. So again, we're asking council to allow us to incorporate these formal UG, uniform guidance procurement standards into our purchasing policy. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
All right, thank you, Robert. Questions, Mr. Grantis?
Robert, just one question, it's a curiosity question. How often do we run into sole source procurements as our town is concerned? Do we run into that very often, or?
Well, federal?
Yeah.
Typically, up to this point, federal funding's been large construction projects with the EDA or USDA. The EDA, we had stuff over in the ECIA to have another EDA project with the new wastewater treatment plant, with that line we're going to run from the ECIA over to the new wastewater treatment site. So typically, there's not a lot, it hasn't been historic without a federal funding involved in what the town does, but when these standards became in effect of January 1st, 2018, it kind of turned the whole purchasing environment upside down, because everybody, not just the town, all municipalities, whatnot, anybody that was getting federal funding had to comply with these new requirements. So it's an added layer of red tape, so to speak.
Councilman Grantis filed this too. Council will tell me that a purchase order is a form of a contract, so we do do some sole source purchase orders, quite a few. They're not usually on federal jobs or federal money, but they are local or sometimes state money, so it is there. And then the other thing I would say is, the position you guys approved for our contract manager, procurement manager of the new position a couple of months ago, is to fill some of this mission, because we have not been as consistent as we should have with following some of these policies, and now we're moving to a little bit bigger league. It's one thing to say Clayton's growing, it's another thing, when you look at the size and complexity of our contracts, this is the nitty-gritty behind that. So we've got to get the nitty-gritty right, so to speak, and all three of these subjects, this one and the next two, really relate to that, so.
Thank you.
Again, the big thing with the uniform guidance is you have to file the most restrictive rule. So if the state's more restrictive, you're filing the state. If the uniform guidance is more restrictive, you're filing the uniform guidance. Or in the event your local policy is more restrictive, you got to file that. That's the big key with the uniform guidance, it's the most restrictive, is that's what you have to file with your purchasing procurement.
Holder.
Robert, it looks like to me that this has the potential to save money for the town. Is that your opinion?
Save money?
It looks like to me this has the potential for saving money for the town. Do you agree with that?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's going to save money over anything else, it's, you're, if you're having to go out, in certain things, it would if you're having to go out and get bids, okay? Like, the state doesn't require you to go out and get formal price quotes in certain things, where the uniform guidance says with the small purchases, you have to go out and get several quotes, and then within that range, within those quotes, you're supposed to award the purchase to the most competitive reputable bidder. So in that context, if you're going out and getting quotes for something you wouldn't normally get quotes for, you could save, could save money, because you're getting a competitive quote. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Robert. I'll turn it over to the council for their deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution 2021-03. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is the MWBE policy update.
Mayor and council, Rich Capola, Deputy Town Manager, I'm gonna be taking this one for Robert. So this is actually an update to a policy that we have, currently have on the books. It's a little bit outdated with the new town attorney's office coming on board and with some construction solicitations that we've got coming up for bid. We wanted to make sure that we had the most up-to-date information in ordinance. The town attorney's office worked with, I believe they used the template sent forth by the school of government to establish these guidelines, or this policy, I should say. It continues the town's current efforts in terms of the 10% verifiable goal with minority participation for these types of projects. Currently, that is the same number that is in our existing policy. The biggest change here, the state now has the hub office, the historically underutilized business office under the Department of Administration. When our ordinance was originally approved, a lot of this was kind of decentralized, so individual towns or cities had to kind of manage that process. Now, there's an entire office at the state level that, all, they have a formal process for the individual entities to get certified as DVE or WBE, or disadvantaged business or woman-owned business, as well as, you know, a repository so that, for instance, the next projects that we come up, we will notify them of the project and the solicitation on our website so that we can go ahead and reach out to the disadvantaged business community and so that they know it's available. The town currently already does similar acts. We actually usually, for these types of projects, advertise in the Greater Diversity Newsletter. That's been a standard practice since, at least since before I've gotten here, so at least three or four years at this point. So really, this ordinance, or excuse me, this policy updates the current one, establishes formal forms for us so that it's a little bit easier when we're actually going through the procurement. So when, once Robert gets that procurement policy, or position fulfilled, hopefully, we've got the game plan for them to follow already set up and they can come in and just go ahead and help us implement it. So with that, I'll take any questions?
I just have one question for you. So I know that the goal for them is to review this every five years. So are they having trouble, like, having minority businesses participate in this program? Is that the reason why they didn't change it from the last five years? Or what do you think the reason is?
To be honest, I can't give you a very good answer as to why they picked five years. I don't know if that actually comes down from the federal mandate. I'm not sure if the town attorney's got any additional information about what may have said that.
My name is Francis Frazberry. I'm a stand-in for Jim Call this evening, for those of you that haven't had the meeting. That is a federal standard. That's just reflective of the latest tweaks of the, of the WBE requirements from the feds and as reviewed by the governments in the state for years and years, clearly.
Okay. Is there any way that, that we could look at increasing that number? Or is that something that we cannot do? Or?
I would imagine, we can confirm this, but I would imagine that you have the option course of reviewing and updating policies such as this on a more frequent basis than what is required by the federal statutes. At this point, I wouldn't think there would be any obstacle there, any reason why you couldn't, if you chose it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Grantis?
Rich, under the section of prime contractors, CM at risk and its first-tier subcontractors, there's a comment here that says, "For purposes of this subsection, the term contractors shall also include first-tier subcontractors under a construction manager at risk. And the contractors shall, at least 10 days prior to the scheduled day of bid opening or due date for proposals, notify minority businesses of potential subcontracting opportunities listed in the proposal." To me, based on what I know about bid submissions, in most cases, you have certainly much more than 10 days. So my question is, why, why do we have at least 10 days in this particular document? I mean, it doesn't seem reasonable to me. And I may be missing the boat, but I don't think so.
Well, two things, particularly with CM at risk, construction manager at risk has a very specific procurement or delivery method for projects. The likelihood of us utilizing that here for the town are, well, I'm gonna say slim and numb, but we're about to go through a design-build bridge that nobody else in the state seems to have done. So it's very limited to that one specific procurement method, or delivery method, excuse me. In terms of the minimum of 10 days, to be completely honest, I'd have to defer to the town attorney again. I'm not sure if that's statute or if that was the school of government trying to just put that in as a best practice recommendation.
And if I could, while he looks it up, I will tell you that this is to shield you from picking a CM at-risk contractor and then that contractor passing it down to avoid the MBE goals. And so what this is really aimed at is making sure that, that CM at-risk contractor passes it down to their subs and those subs are going by the rules with what they're doing. Now, when it gets down to the second-tier level, these get to be smaller packages. They can be very small. And so sometimes 30 days, sometimes it's only two weeks. It just depends. But, but two weeks is, you don't want more than two weeks on a really small package because these projects are designed to go fairly rapidly. So people usually know of these projects, or kind of like our wastewater treatment plant, that the market's not gonna be asleep about it. It's gonna be watching it. And so it, I'm not trying to defend it or not defend it, but 10 days is probably the right time, at a minimum, at a minimum. And council may have a different opinion of that or the same one, I'm not sure.
Well, just in my experience, that seems like an awful short period of time.
Yeah. In practice, it's not that bad with these big projects.
I also have two questions that were submitted by a citizen, Candace Mosley-Russell. Her first question is, "Might I ask why the percentage is set so low at only 10%? Is there statistical evidence to support such a low goal?" And of course, I know that you've addressed part of that question from Councilman Avery Everett.
Yeah, so I think, you know, again, the 10% verifiable goal is, except for the feds, the states require to establish that. And that effectively gets pushed to the local municipalities as well, particularly when there's federal funds in place. You know, the intent there is obviously to make sure that we can, we can achieve what they're asking in terms of the actual number and how that's reviewed on a regular basis. I'm not, I'm not as familiar with that, unfortunately.
The other question that she had is, "I am also wondering if there are inclusion efforts set for projects with bids below the monetary threshold set, so smaller-scale jobs?"
Yeah, so again, in practice, for some of the smaller, we do make sure we try to promote and advertise. We do typically ask for good faith effort for there to be minority participation. Again, this will formalize the process a little more to make it easier for us to include. I will say, for some of those smaller jobs, there is a, even in this current policy, there is a self-perform kind of caveat to that. So for some of those smaller jobs, a lot of those contractors are able to complete all the tasks within that project by themselves. So they are, there is an allowance for them to be able to perform those, those smaller jobs without having to include others. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have any way of measuring the percentage?
Yeah, so on these contracts, there's actually, under the normal procurement that we typically have done for other projects, and I could go back and review some of those for you. The statutes require, or the agencies lending us the money require that there be an actual affidavit signed that says what percentage, by dollar, basically, but what percentage of the overall contract is being let, or is being subcontracted to a DVE or WBE, or historically underutilized business. So there is a way, what this does is put specific protocols in place for us to be able to track that long-term and to be able to verify that we are continually meeting that goal.
We don't have any history we can look back at.
Sorry, what was that?
We do not have any history we can look back at.
I can go back and pull some of the last federal-funded projects and provide that information to you.
That might be interesting to know.
I do know, just off the top of my head, since I've been here, two larger projects, the ECIA Transmission Project, as well as the Central Lift Station Project. Both of those projects were actually won by the hub, historically underutilized business registered companies. So almost, the majority of those projects, I don't want to throw a percentage out there, but those projects were performed by, by hub-registered folks. But I can pull some additional information as well.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Grantis?
Just one other comment. I noticed in the packet that we do have the Town of Clayton's Minority and Small Business Participation Outreach Plan. I'm glad to see that that is actually a part of this, that we'll be voting on this evening. And I think it's got some good stuff in here, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the town attorney's office for jumping in feet-first here with, with starting up with us and getting this pulled together at short notice.
Mayor, if I may, that 10% figure is straight from the general statutes, statute that's listed in your material, that's precisely where that comes from.
Thank you for the clarification. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-04.
Second.
A motion and a second for the adoption of the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Holder.
The right number, I thought it was 05.
This is 04.
No, 04. 04 was the next one. That's the next one. We're at 04.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Up next is the Title VI Non-Discrimination Policy.
Going along the lines, again, with updating our procurement policies. So the Title VI policy is something that NC DOT actually administers for the state. Sometime in early 2020, they kind of put out some information just regarding how everybody currently has it set up, found a lot of inconsistencies throughout the state. So in the fall, they did provide guidance for municipalities to be able to adopt a Title VI compliant policy and procedure based on what the DOT's guidance was from the federal side. So this document here, there's a memo from the town attorney that kind of outlines the changes, or excuse me, the formalization of that policy based on that DOT guidance. First step is to appoint a Title VI liaison. Our policy sets the town manager, J.D. Solomon, as that liaison. Additionally, we have to post the policy, once it's approved, on the website, as well as physically here in Town Hall. We have to have available hard copies as well here, which we will work with the town clerk's office to ensure that we do have those available, as well as following the actual procedures and policy, that is, the meat and potatoes of the actual document. Once that's all completed, there's some contract language that would also be included in our future contracts on any projects that we procure for. So again, this was a guidance set forward from DOT. The documents and the policy itself are pretty boilerplate, I guess, if you want to call it that, from, from what they're got into us to ensure compliance. So. Questions?
Any questions or comments for Rich on this one?
All right. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-05.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I'll move, sorry, Mr. Mayor, you ready for me? I'm here tonight.
Up next on the agenda is the COVID-19 update.
And I'm gonna let Joy come up. She, she was kind enough to prepare this presentation based on some research that her and Scott Bonar did for Parks and Rec. And to preface this, we have been discussing, now that we've delayed Town Hall and COVID policies of slowing things down in the crisis, ironically, as we look forward, Parks and Rec and the library would like to start the reopening plans. In fact, Joy, I won't stir her thunder, but she said as early as February 15th, and Scott as early as February 1st. And so we've talked about delaying that to March or February, March 1 or whatnot, but clearly, in what we're looking at, that catches a little bit of us off-guard with kind of the current state of the flu season and the COVID practices out there. So what I asked Joy and Scott to do is to, to really go out and benchmark and give you guys an information item tonight about what other towns and municipalities and counties are doing with their Parks and Rec and their libraries. And I think what you'll find is, it's very inconsistent. So with that, Joy, the stage is yours.
So we started by looking at the town halls that are open. And this changes daily. So I think I pulled these numbers last Tuesday or Wednesday. At that point, Fuquay, Marina, Holly Springs, Knightdale, Smithfield, Wake Forest, and Wendell were all open. And Apex was closed, Cary was closed, Garner was closed. I don't know if you've been following Raleigh, but they were open, then they closed. So we've, we've had a little bit of back and forth there. And it really depends on if someone on staff in one of these municipalities, if they have an outbreak of cases. So that's so far. And what we found was many websites didn't explain the precautions being taken in their town halls. I did contact a couple people. Holly Springs wants face masks and gloves to be used. Knightdale, staff completes a self-assessment daily that includes a temperature check. So masks are required for all staff in Town Hall. I will say that I did find it helpful for the websites when I went to them, if they had a banner up top that just said COVID-19 precautions, that really helps people find that kind of information. And it can also help mitigate any clashes that we might have with people coming into Town Hall. For library openings, I did a couple of things. I looked at our currently open libraries in neighboring areas. Harnett County is open, Lee County is open, and Wake County is starting to open, which is pretty new. Fuquay-Varina and Wake Forest Community Libraries are both opened. If you look at the closed and scheduled openings, Smithfield Library, they're closed, except for now, they've opened up their computer lab. I just saw that today. Holly Springs is looking to open January 27th. Morrisville, Morrisville and Wendell are opening on the 27th. Again, these, these are sort of daily changes, so I go back and check back and forth, and some of this has even changed from when we spoke on Wednesday of last week.
Yeah, last week, when we were putting this together, Wake County libraries were shut down, but parks were open. And in other places, it was vice versa.
And then I went back and looked and I was like, oh wait, no, everybody's opening back up. So I also, with the North Carolina Public Library Directors Association, we have a great group of directors and we communicate pretty often. And I put out a survey last week, and at the time that I put this together, 35 public library systems had answered. That's a little, it's about two-thirds of our systems, well, not two-thirds, but it's more than half of the systems had answered. Of the ones surveyed, 22 were open with limited hours or reduced capacity, four are open at fully regular hours, and nine remain closed. So I went a little bit further in, in our survey and was able to ask them about their health check procedures. And so you'll see that I've divided it into staff and library patrons. So we know that there's a little bit different protocol for just when we're open to staff only versus when we're open to the public. The 25 library systems that are open, 25 of the systems are not doing a temperature check for staff and they're not asking health questions. Eight of them are doing a temperature check and two allow for people to self-check as needed. And then with health questions, five ask weekly questions of their staff, five ask them, it looks like five ask them daily, and then the five that ask weekly, they will also ask staff to self-monitor. Then if you look at capacity, four libraries, like I mentioned before, are open at regular hours for full capacity, and 21 are open with limited hours and capacity. That is clearly the trend in the state. When I look at our reopening plan, you know, we've done a lot of talking back and forth about this, and I think it'd be, I've already got a thermometer in place to check temperatures daily. I know they're doing that at the fire department. Staff could sign in with a health attestation, or, we already currently have a policy in place where staff are supposed to be monitoring daily, but we're not signing off on anything. It's just agreed that we'll be checking daily, and my staff knows to do that. For patrons, I would prefer not to check temperatures, temperatures for patrons, but I would be open to doing a patron sign-in or checklist. Again, this is all, you know, I'm open to changes in this if J.D. and Delicia and our Masks and social distancing are required in all the libraries. Most libraries encourage a short stay for their patrons. I will say that I did ask libraries who was opening by appointment, and none of them are doing appointments, which I was really surprised by that because that's what we'd been doing for a while. They tend to have just moved past that to being open at limited capacity. I think we're not being stormed by tons of people, especially because we make curbside services available. I'm sorry, I'm looking over there. I'll look at you guys, too. So I just found that interesting. Am I skipping anything?
Nope.
All right. And finally, Parks and Recreation. Scott has been working with his peers and other departments, and we found that a number of Parks and Recreation community centers are open with full or modified hours. That's Garner, Smithfield, Fuquay Marina, Wake Forest, and Holly Springs are all open. Apex was closed, but they were reevaluating today. Cary is closed, Knightdale was closed, and Morrisville will be closed January 11 through 29th. So again, these things change daily. I saw Scott and Matt today and we were saying, you know, you could check one day if someone's open and the next day they might be closed. Something I didn't mention about libraries, but I think this would fit town hall, library, and Parks and Recreation. When a community is hit really hard by the virus, that also tends to affect the opening So for Parks and Recreation, I didn't have quite the same kind of data that I did for libraries, but I was able to find capacity. A number of them are open at 30% capacity or limited capacity. The areas open are walking tracks, walking tracks and gyms. Holly Springs is wide open. They have camps, classes, fitness center, and walking track open. Wake Forest has the walking track classes and fitness room open. In Smithfield, they do have a symptom screening station, but in the other ones, I was not able to find the health check procedures. Again, when a website will state what people are doing, it really does help the public to know what's going on. So Parks and Recreation, we looked at the services that they're offering. Five of the seven are offering classes and open track. None of them are currently offering open gym. Seven of them are planning to do spring sports. A number of them are doing rentals. And then several are doing, allowing tournaments. And one's doing tournaments case by case. You would have to ask Scott for really good specifics on this, as you can, might be able to tell, I'm not the most savvy Parks and Recreation spokesperson, but Scott would be happy to answer some questions if you have any. Scott's got a pretty detailed reopening plan. He wants to offer classes and he wants to make the track available. He's very much keeping an eye on reduced capacity. And he has numbers set out for that. He's looking at open gym, again, with very reduced capacity. You couldn't just play pickup game with the next guys in the gym, but they're looking at allowing people to play on the different goals. He is wanting to offer spring sports starting April 10th, along with rentals and tournaments.
So.
It's a mouthful.
You good? Or you got one more?
Yeah, that's it. That's the last slide I've got, so.
So a reminder for council, a couple things. One, this is for information only. So we're likely going to come back to you next meeting with some more firm proposals. We wanted to give you a chance to see this, absorb this, direct us to go get more information for you. A couple observations I can make about our current program is we've been very, very consistent, and we have had really only two clusters. You know, one of, of course, is the big one, which was the fire department. And the other one's, one is we've been in facility services. But for the most part, anybody that's got COVID at Clayton has not spread it to other employees in the town. They brought it from outside. Somebody's spouses got sick and then they've been able to flag it and we've been able to contain it. I think part of that is because we've not opened our facilities up and we shut them down. So we've been very consistent and very careful, and I think we've gotten very, very good results with the program that we've got. So pressure is going to come to open up again. And I think we were even had some Parks and Rec and some library stuff going when we had town hall closed. I think as we go to look and you guys think about how we want to do this, we recommend to you, is if you remember when we gave you the reopening phase in the fall and you guys approved it, it was to start kind of a 60 or 90-day trial period here at town hall, open the building up and see how it was going. I think the way we're leaning is, let's watch and see how many other communities around us are opening, not be on the leading edge of this thing, but be a little behind it. Start with our Parks and Rec and our library, see how it goes for maybe 30 days or 60 days, watch other communities, and then come back with our main building opening back up. And that probably will be sometime March, April timeframe. Now, of course, parking lot project also plays into this because once we reopen and have people start coming in, we not only have a COVID issue, but we also have a parking issue and a congestion issue. So we've got to manage that very well, too. The other part I would say is we need to be consistent as we reopen. I don't think it's fair to open up parts of it because that's what we should do. And then other parts stay closed because we got to protect people more. I think we've got to treat our staff all the same and we got to treat the public all the same as we use facilities. We also get a little bit, parks you think it's outside, but remember, people still have to use common bathrooms and common concession stands when there's tournaments. So there is places in there to spread, even if the athletes are moving around. Scott would also tell you that we are having quite an interest in our seniors, which you think is our most vulnerable community, but they're eager to get back on the indoor walking track. And Scott's eager to have them on that. But again, we'd be opening up the indoor walking track to a portion of the population that some people would argue we shouldn't do that to. Another argument to be made, that's the partial of people that need to stay healthy and have their immune system high. So we don't have easy answers, but I think we will come up with a plan and there'll be a phased plan and a kind of a trial by error and a wait-and-see plan. But I'll only say it's a little surprising as we talk about this. It's really not because we got to look out four to six weeks in all of this. But currently, of course, we do have a bit of a COVID crisis going on out in the real world. So I'll leave it at that and for your thoughts, and we will be glad to get any other information for you that we can.
Councilman Holder. Councilman Holder, yes, sir.
I think to open prematurely would be a big mistake. The people that are getting infected daily and the number of hospitalizations are some of the highest we've had in the last six months. And until there's a widespread inoculation, I can't see any reason to change what we're doing much.
Mr. Granis.
A couple of questions that I have is, do we know if there's an infection rate that any of these facilities that have opened have incurred? And the next question off of that would be, what happens if there is an infection in the facility? What is it that they do?
Do you mean an infection rate coming from open facility or are they?
Yeah, I mean, somebody going into a facility and, well, I won't even say go into a facility, that they have an infection that they can trace back to that facility?
I have not heard that. That doesn't mean that it hasn't happened, but I haven't heard that. What I have observed is some libraries that have been open, and then if a staff member contracts the virus, they close down and take immediate action. But I haven't, I have not heard about people going to a library and coming back and giving COVID to everybody that they caught at the library. One thing that I should mention in there is that we've gotten new guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services about how the viruses transmitted via surface, like if I picked this up and gave it to you. And they're saying that it's really not transmitting that way. It's airborne. And so their advice, they've even said, you know, we don't give quarantine advice anymore, but you want to disinfect your materials. And at the library, we have reduced our quarantine time. We were up to 96 hours. We've reduced that, but we disinfect. So every book is, I mean, we were already cleaning books, but we are now using disinfecting materials that sits on the surface of the book for at least 30 seconds. It's the right percentage of alcohol in the disinfectant to make sure it kills the virus. And then we let them sit overnight before we lend them back out. And that's coming from the state library and DHHS. So I think that's just another layer of protection that we can offer to our patrons as they come in so that they know that we're not just, that we're paying attention and we're getting advice from the best places we can, but we're not seeing things being passed from one book to the other. You may be able to find traces of the virus on the book, but it's not transmissible.
I want one more comment for you guys. We have not forgot about Scotty Henley in the Clayton Center. I think he's got a little bit different problem in that he can't get the acts to come in and they won't come in without filling the auditorium. So even if we could have 25 or 50 people in there from a financial perspective, that's not really a venue that's open to him. Whereas Parks and Rec or the library could bring people in, even in small numbers, and be viable to the community. So again, no action tonight on this, just to get food for thought and for you guys to ask us questions before we come back for definitive plan. I know Joy and Scott would like to open sooner than later, but in a safe way, I know. But they would like to open sooner than later, so.
So when you mentioned JD that we're getting pressed to reopen these two, so I haven't been getting pressed on this. So I'm just curious to know, you know, is this coming from like, you know, people who have called Parks and Rec or called the library and said, are you going to open? When are you going to open? Why aren't you open? All that stuff, because I haven't.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have not got called either, and I'm trusting my department managers who deal with those groups every day, and both Scott and Joy were telling me that, so.
Yeah, we've continued to do curbside service, so we're in pretty regular contact with our patrons. They want to come back safely. And as you know, we were open by appointment through December or until December 4th. Wait, no, whenever it was that we, before Thanksgiving, we closed back. I'm sorry, it's been a long winter. So, you know, they understand and they're really glad that we're keeping them safe. They're glad we're doing curbside service. But we know that there are people who don't get what they need. There are people who need to use computers for tax season. There are people who need to use computers to file for unemployment. They don't have internet access at their house. So I'm thinking about, a lot of times, we'll have people come up wanting to come in and we say, I'm sorry, we're closed, you know. So we're not getting angry people. People have been really kind and pretty awesome, but they are asking when we're going to open and they're interested. I think Scott's hearing a lot of it, too, like JD mentioned, from some of his senior citizens who want to come in. It's too cold and icy outside to walk. They want to come in and use the track.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Then we'll jump on down to staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Okay. I want two things tonight, and I'm going to probably skip the several things I could talk about because I've got two kind of important ones, and they may be a little lengthy. So I guess as a preface for this for everybody, and I've had to make a couple notes to get this right. I usually don't do that, as you guys know. But Clayton, as a community, we've always pride ourselves where families can grow and develop, where we can walk in our neighborhoods and down our trails safely. And really, where we're free of major crime and the scourge of drugs that are in a lot of our communities. We've done a good job at that. Our police department's always has been and always will continue to be a high value and a high priority for our community. I would think if you look across the country, even across the state, we are definitely considered pro-police and for the police. So I want there to be no mistake as we go forward in these coming weeks and months that all of what we do with our current investigation that's ongoing is really about concern about improving our police department. It's not to get the police department, it's not to do anything to the police department. It's to make it a better place and really restore it to the stature that I think it really once had in the region that we've kind of fell back on a little bit. Two things for our Clayton community that I want them to be assured of is this, is that our frontline officers are really doing a good job. They are. The officers on patrol, the traffic officers, the officers we put on the trail, they're really doing a good job. And our women and men that do those jobs do have tough jobs and they're stressful jobs. I think if we could do a better thing for them, is what we're seeing now, is that we have had some misbehaviors and some mismanagement that have added some stress to some already stressful jobs. So I would say to the people Clayton, everybody, that don't forget to give our police officers a smile and praise. Be confident in that because they are, for the most part, doing a very good job of serving our community. The other thing that I will say, the second thing, is that Akron Police Chief Greg Tartt is a big part of the solution. And anything that goes from here is really our native son. We're really lucky to have a native son in Greg Tartt that's got 30 years at the highest level of the state, that's willing to come back as a sense of duty and a sense of calling to come back and help us through some tough times. So he's got a great reputation. He's seen some bad things. I mean, he and I have talked about some things he's seen that I think some of you would never want to see him or experience. He's seen some really bad crimes and criminals. This is the summary of that investigation. He's seen some corrupt cops. And he's seen some fixes in law enforcement that's been needed really to straighten things It's roughly 400 pages. There's another 1,500 pages of exhibits and testimony that I've not done, so the stack out. He understands investigation. He understands best practices and investigative techniques, something that we need here. would be about that high. He understands development of consistent and implementation of policies. The next steps will be to do our internal review of this document. And he's an accomplished leader of a very large law enforcement operation. It's a draft document, and it's really the first step of moving toward completion of So I don't want us to lose, one, that our frontline officers are doing a very good the investigation. But we'll do our internal review. job, and two, that Greg is really here as part of a very much needed solution. We'll ask for clarifications, and it may trigger some smaller sub-investigations before we can really wrap this up. So with that said. It's difficult to predict the nature of how long this will take, but it will probably take somewhere on the order of at least 30 days and probably more or less be on the order of 60 days. The public and even this town council is probably going to be frustrated by the amount of information that we can provide to the public. I want to remind everyone that these are personnel matters. All of our employees, whether they are held accountable for some of the things that have gone on or whether they feel impacted by those events, they all have certain rights of privacy under the law. And so I will continue to work with our legal team on the type and form of information that we can release in this matter. My goal with that said would be to release some more information sooner than later. I think there's a lot of people that are interested in it. But for now, I can tell you that this non-crime investigation was initiated as a result of multiple complaints of slightly different forms, similar pattern, of misbehavior and mismanagement in the work environment. At the most general level, the draft report indicates a culture where various forms of misbehavior were tolerated for certain classes or types of people and not for others, and that certain management practices were not implemented as consistently in some cases than in others. The end result was that some people were more impacted than others, but that many had a much stressful work environment than they probably should have had. I'm disheartened by many things that appear in this, that I see in this report. I've had a chance to go through it. When I took the interim role, my impression was there was some mistrust in communication between the administration, and it included the police department, and the town council and certain people in the community that were concerned. On September 1, when I took the job, I was informed there was an SBI criminal investigation underway. All of our employees, whether they are held accountable for some of the things that have gone on or whether they feel impacted by those events, they all have certain rights of privacy under the law. And so I will continue to work with our legal team on the type and form of information that we can release in this matter. My goal with that said would be to release some more information sooner than later. I think there's a lot of people that are interested in it. But for now, I can tell you that this non-crime investigation was initiated as a result of multiple complaints of slightly different forms, similar pattern, of misbehavior and mismanagement in the work environment. At the most general level, the draft report indicates a culture where various forms of misbehavior were tolerated for certain classes or types of people and not for others, and that certain management practices were not implemented as consistently in some cases than in others. The end result was that some people were more impacted than others, but that many had a much stressful work environment than they probably should have had. I'm disheartened by many things that appear in this, that I've seen in this report. I've had a chance to go through it. When I took the interim role, my impression was that there was some mistrust in communication between the administration, and it included the police department, and the town council and certain people in the community that were concerned. On September 1, when I took the job, I was informed there was an SBI criminal investigation underway. And then within three weeks, four weeks of me being here, two more complaints came in. And at that point, I decided that we needed to bring a professional outside firm in to look, to see if this was a trend or something that was bigger in the department with our Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, I realized that these issues were really much deeper than the sharing of information or improvement in communication, and that they were going to be solved in a matter of months, but probably would take months or years for the healing to really happen. And I told the people of Clayton and this town council back in August that I was willing to step in and to be the interim manager. I don't think either the town council had any idea of the things that we would find in this investigation. I, for one, I think there's been some kicking down the road of some previous administration of some issues, but I'm not going to kick this one down the road. I resolved to do that back between Thanksgiving and Christmas that I needed to stick with this. And I actually asked Greg Tarte to come over and put his name and his reputation on the line to join me in the town that he is from and where his parents still live to help us get this right. And so he and I are working on this together, and I will say that I had nothing to do with this, it preceded me, but I do intend to finish it and get it right in the end. Now I'll close on this one with something more positive, because for all the disheartening things I see in this draft report, I do see many things that provide hope and encouragement. In scanning the testimony, I see many positive comments from our officers about living in Clayton, about working for the town in general, and really a mutual belief from the officers in the goodness and sincerity of their fellow officers. I think most of our police officers here, from what I can see, really want to work and live here, and most really want to be good police officers. So now it's up to the current management and the leadership to resolve some old problems, to improve practices and procedures, to be more consistent in what we do, training to retrain, to rebuild the trust, and I will add, maybe most importantly, to start facilitating the healing. So with that, that's all I got to say on this one tonight, but if the council has any questions that I can answer, I will be certainly happy to do so.
Questions or comments? I want you to go back to the part about where we are in the process. So they have given us the assessment, and now staff will go through that assessment. And if staff has questions, then they go back to them and get clarification on things?
That is correct. And by staff, I include our attorneys and some of our outside experts that are giving us advice as we review this document.
Gotcha. And then what is the process after you kind of have, that team kind of has Q and A with these, what happens next after that?
The end result will be a course of action that we'll take, and I would say they're broken into two groups.
Okay, but are we going to get like a final, is this the final draft, or after we get our question and answers done, we get a final draft?
We will get a final report after we get our, finish the investigation. The investigation is, one milestone is complete in draft form of the report.
Gotcha.
The whole investigation is not complete, because we have not read this one, and we have not had a chance to go through it and to see further investigation.
I think that's important to clarify.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we are not completely complete right now.
Correct.
But we do have information for the first time in writing.
Yes.
That frames the problem, that frames the issues, that helps us work with people that may have had complaints or issues, and it also helps us work with people who may have some accountabilities going forward for the things that are contained in the report.
Okay.
So that's where we are.
Thank you. That's good. Just wanted to get that part clarified, JD. All right, anyone else? All right, anything else for the manager?
Chief Tarte, Greg, would you like to say anything or anything to add to what I may have said?
I'm like, he's a man of few words.
So the other thing that I've got for comments is something that I went over with staff the other week, and it's really talking about where we're going in 2021 and the many things we have to do. At the top of my list is clearly the police department issues that we'll be moving to try to get free and the process of improving some things over the next year. That's an obvious one. Related to that, I will say that what I found on September 1 is a relationship between the fire department, who's doing a great job, and the police department, but it was more than just between the two leaders. It was kind of down the ranks, too, of whatever had happened. And so we, Lee and Greg and I, Lee and Greg have known each other a long time, too, and we've all known each other, but we have pledged to come together and rebuild a really good relationship between both the fire department and the police department, because Clayton really needs that. We need our emergency responders to be on the same page and always in cooperation. So that's two. Three, and it's easy to forget, and I'm not really suggesting we do, but the fire department is still healing. They went through some tough times with the death, death of the deputy chief, with the wife of a firefighter passing, and really a third that survived, but will never really go back to being a firefighter like he used to be. And so we forget about sometimes what we went through back in September with the firefighters, but what was clear to me and the chief and Matt and some other folks is that we still have some healing to do there, too. And we need to spend some time in reorganizing and getting our system back together, and we've started that process. But as we go through 2021, we'd really like to bring that organization to some improvements Fourth on my list, and fifth, kind of our policy matters, and these are things you've not heard about in these meetings, but our personnel policy is out of date. Now, the good news is, it wasn't bad when it was written, and it's still pretty good, I guess, but it was last written in 2000. And it was targeted to be updated over the last few years, and it really is something that we need to now get pushed through. And some of the things we see in different ways through the organization says that really shouldn't have been laying around that long in the form it is. We also have a series of health and safety policies that were finalized about a year or so ago and have not been done either. And that's important for this council to approve those, because it goes in how all the work units, all the elements of the town departments work together and put in their work plans and their job plans, how they do there. We really want that to be consistent. Six for us to consider is the financial standing of contract manager in the purchasing departments. As we've talked many times, we're basically with the capital project we're doing, we're going to basically double the amount of spending over the next few years that the town is used to doing. And as you've heard tonight, we probably weren't, have not been as tight or good about making sure our compliance and our conditions are where they need to be. We've already took steps to evaluate that. We've already taken some steps to add a new position. As you heard tonight, we're taking some steps to improve that, but that really needs to get done as this town grows, and it's not been done in recent years. Our capital programs are stretched. Our general fund with our parks bond is really maxed out. Initiated a thing in the fall, and basically with that addition, the general fund is pretty much at its ceiling. The water and sewer fund will be maxed out with what we're trying to do with the water reclamation facility. And the electrical fund has never really been a strong capital fund. But what we need to do, what we've done, and I've got Deputy Manager Capola really working on that, is making sure we use all those capital funds together so that we can do as much as possible and really integrate the approach to that. But again, something that has needed to be done. Council's also heard about AMI, our fixed meter system for our electric and water and sewer. Those are our cash registers. Your budget amendment that you approved tonight goes through to make up for basically about a $500,000 overrun, plus a couple hundred thousand of overrun that we tried to push off onto the departments to make up. But we don't want to keep pushing a $5.7 million project into $5.00 million budget. So we've found that reality. The other thing we're going to have to do is we get that project finished in the spring. We don't have any money to go back and do quality control or quality assurance on what's been done. There are thousands of meters out there that have been stalled. We really need to go back through those again and put some extra money in that to make sure that was done right as we move forward. Our Parks and Rec bond is ninth on our list and the partnering that we're looking at. If you remember, we offered those bonds, and now that we've got our estimates back, they're about, for the rendering of the consultants, we would pay about twice as much as what we have in bond money. So we have to trim back. We are working with the YMCA. We've tried to. That was not successful, but we do have a positive relationship, trying to get some leasing opportunities with the civitans to increase our planned facilities by 40%. And we're encouraged by some movement with Clayton High School, where we have worked with the principal and the Board of Education and the county parks people to try to figure out a way to stretch the dollars we have so that we can get as much out of our parks and recreation as we can. But again, I think the bad news that we found last spring, before my time, was that we really didn't have enough money, and we kind of let it falter. We got back on top of it this fall, and we've started pushing that forward. So we will push that forward, and we will have a great Parks and Rec bond program, and we will have plenty of planned space for the children of Clayton. Number 10 is another kid that's been kicked down the road for a few years. We've got an IT contract with a company called VC3. We've had that for over a decade. That's forever in the IT/IS world, and we really haven't really looked at it in the last few years in hard detail. Again, Deputy Manager Capola has been doing that. We've used the advantage of having a transition in our own ranks and a transition in the VC3 ranks to really look hard at our IT program, but that is another capital investment that may have to be made that really has not been accounted for in recent years. In this building itself, we have an asset management grant program to look at our facilities. I did that a few years ago for water and sewer as a consultant. We do that regularly for our streets and roads in the general fund, but we have never done it for these buildings. And if recall, we had a mushroom going in the corner back over there a few months ago and some drainage problems with a gutter. So this building now crosses 20 years old. Fire Station 1 has crossed a decade, Police Station has crossed a decade, and Community Park a decade. So we're starting to see things fail. We need a plan. We need to have that in the capital program, and we need to make sure we have operations and maintenance staff levels at the appropriate level as we have aging facilities. Number 12 is a water and sewer master plan. Again, that was developed in 2015-2016 timeframe. The last few years, it was left out of all planning, and now we're seeing problems in both our water system, our drinking water system, and our wastewater system, especially in the southeast region, where we're having projects like Lumen start to grow and burgeoning. So we're going to have to look at that, and we've started that process. Our water wastewater reclamation facility is one of the largest in the state. It's a mammoth project for a city of our size. It's commitments we've made for our industries, and we've got to see that through duration. We have two mega projects that are coming to you in the next month, and one is Lumen and one is Ashcroft 2. Lumen itself, by the developers' estimates, will add about $400 million in new tax base to Clayton and its mixed-use facilities, its apartments, its hospital support facilities. It's a big project and something we need to do and something with our capital program stretch, we're going to have to be smart and find money in public-private partnerships to team with developers to make some things happen that'll help the county continue to grow and manage money our way. And 15 and final is staffing and restaffing. You know, organizational capacity makes all this possible. It's a big list. It's a lot to put in front of us, but we've got to have the right staff. I'm going to continue to bring in experienced staff. I'm going to bring in staff that can help us with our problems. More importantly, I'm going to bring in staff that knows Clayton. I want somebody to, for the most part, not everybody, but they're going to know a little bit about our culture. They're going to name the names of our streets. They're going to know where we've been to help them define where we're going. And so we will be making some staffing and some organization changements as we go through the year. I want to say a couple things here, because I think it's important. I think part of our long list of things we've got to do is, one, a product of growth and prosperity, and there's no other way to say it. The other part of it is a lot of projects that have been kicked down the road and not dealt with over the last few years. I wouldn't have said that all in September when I took over, but as I've moved through the fall and looked at it and took a really good look at things, we simply had the wrong approaches to a lot of the things we were doing. As we move through 2021, we're going to get back to our roots. I'll call it the house that Steve Biggs built, but it's one that lasts us for 19 years and where we flourished for a long time. For whatever's happened over the last three or four years, we've kind of got off of those old foundations. Some of those foundations we'll look to restore that we've already started to restore, and we'll do better in 2021 across the staff, is we want open and honest communication between the town management team and our town council. We've lost that for the last few years, and we've paid a price for it. We need to reestablish a sound and realistic financial plan for the future. We have money, we have things coming in, but we've got a lot of promises made and expectations. And part of what the old culture was, I think, with Steve, is we always had a realistic plan, and people may have not liked it, but they knew where we were going and what we could afford to do. We're going to do that again. And finally, third, and that, back to the old foundation, is we're going to be responsive to our community. The days of not talking or people telling me that I can't get into town hall and nobody's calling me back, or my problems have laid around for a year, or even staff telling me they've laid around for a year, those days are over now. We're moving back to a system where we're going to be responsive to our community. It doesn't mean that people are going to get all they want, but they're going to know where we stand, and they're going to know where the certainties are, and more importantly, for many of our businesses and people in the community, we're going to remove some A few more words I would say is that we've got a lot of good people in this organization. Some of our problems came from a previous management that hired some of their own people, some people that I think didn't have the experience, that were first-time department managers, that were new to the community and didn't know the street names, as I said earlier. Clayton deserves and Clayton can afford to have experienced people. They don't have to hire rookie managers in all positions. Now, that doesn't mean some of our rookie managers are all bad managers. It doesn't mean that at all. I'm not saying that. And we've got a lot of good people up and down the ranks. But it is saying, as we go to restaff and look at these problems and issues we have before us, these opportunities, we're going to go out and find people with 20 or 30 years' experience, and we're going to bring them in, and we're going to let them do the things they know how to do and they have experience to do. For those that are outside watching us, I would say that, and outside, I mean, these are people. We've got a state revolving fund loan that we'll hear about next week. We've got a meeting with the local government commission on Friday. We've got bond agencies, we've got banks watching us. We've got national developers like Full Teeth Homes and Craig Davis Properties looking to put big investments in Clayton. And we've got our industries like Caterpillar and Griffles and Novo wanting to know, where do we put our money, and is that place really well managed? And the answer I have to that is yes, we sure are, and will continue to be. And I think one of the hardest things with any kind of management of any kind of business or operation is to realize that you're on the wrong road and to get off that road. That is pain, and that takes some people second guessing you, and I can guarantee it's not always unanimous. But that's what leadership's about, and that's what being well-managed is about, and that's what we're going to do here. We'll do the things that are unpopular to make ourselves better and serve the issues and the commitments that we've made. So I'd say at the end of the day, we're dynamic, we're open, and we're prosperous. And I was asked back late August, it wasn't necessarily my, I tried to push that off a little bit and say there's other people that could do it, but this council humbled me by asking me to be the interim manager. And I agreed to step in the gap, because this was Clayton. This was my home. I wouldn't have done it for Andrew. I wouldn't have done it for Clinton. I'd have just done it for Clayton. I asked people like Greg Tarte to join me, and he did, too. What was clear to me as we went down the journey in the fall was that the problems were much bigger in some ways than they needed to be, and we needed to get caught up. And that's why I came forward and said, hey, guys, if you want me to stand in, I'll keep standing in, and I'll work with you for a few years, and I'll get these things done. That was your call, and it could have gone either way, but I did feel like the obligation was not to kick the can, but to take on the problems head on. And that's what we're going to do. I think 2021 is going to be a year full of challenges. It's going to take a personal toll on me. It's going to take a personal toll on some of you, but it's going to be a great year for Clayton. It's going to be a turnaround year. It's going to be a pivotal year. It's going to be a growth year, and I think it's going to keep us on the path for the next 20 years. That's really the message I had for my staff a couple weeks ago. That's the message I bring to you guys tonight and my manager's notes. Hopefully, I can come back to you a year from now and tell you the things we have accomplished and the next level of things we intend to do. So with that, my manager's comments for tonight are complete.
Thanks, sir. All right, town attorney?
All right, town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, no report. Just to say, Jim Colley, your town attorney, sends his regards. Appreciate everyone's being so understanding about our having to have to stand in this evening. We hate to not have Jim here right off the bat. This will be a one-time thing, I can assure you. I have enjoyed being with you tonight and the firm looks forward very much to working with the town in the months ahead.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. All right, town clerk.
No reports. Thank you.
All right, other staff, DDA update.
All right, well, that, while that is loading, good evening, everyone. Councilman and Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure why it's not wanting to come up. It's me. So basically, just to get some good vibes going with our Downtown Development Association, like all of our businesses did, they hit roadblocks as well. Everything that they were used to doing and everything as far as events and fundraisers and things like that, it was all thrown out, obviously. So they were tasked with coming together in a time when they were restructuring themselves, but also restructuring their goals as far as initiatives for our small businesses. So we wanted to just highlight them and some of the things that they've accomplished in this mid-year so far. So as you're well aware, we have, basically, we have our DDA Advisory Board. Under that falls these four committees. And so in those committees, we have Organization Promotions, Economic Vitality, and Design. So under our Organization Committee, we actually were able to come in and redo the structure. The structure, it worked in the past, but we just found it wasn't working anymore as far as the new personalities coming in and things like that. We actually did a complete leadership transition. Our chair and co-chair were changed out to a chair and vice chair. We re-engaged and recruited over a third of our new, our new board members and that does consist of our small business owners or downtown stakeholders. And we did, we redid the organizational structure and framework for that. And so as you can see here, all the four committees that I mentioned, we actually instead, not just the structure, we went in and redid the functions of each of these committees. So we had heard feedback that they weren't necessarily clear on their goals, nor were some of the, the business owners. So we went in, redid this, promoted it, educated the public. And so that was some of the things that the Organization Committee was able to accomplish. Also, in this strange COVID time, they were able to get more volunteer engagement and recruitment because people stepped up and wanted to help. They saw the need. Our Organization Committee also wanted to refocus on fundraising because we weren't able to do our events like we usually do, much like the concerts and outdoor movies and things like that. And we actually redid intercommittee relationships because before they weren't necessarily, they had gotten to a point where it started where they needed to intermingle, they needed to talk and communicate all the time. And they kind of ended up separating and to no one's fault, it just kind of happened that way. So that's some of the things our Organization Committee took on. And we called those pretty good accomplishments because we were able to reintroduce some new leaders and get them in the process. So our Design Committee, they primarily focus on our facade grant program. So one of the things that we did with that was community education and that brought greater interest. We actually, it was like in October, I had had so many people reach out, we thought we would have our budget tapped by December. And so that's a, that's a great accomplishment. And so that's what led to more applicants. And we actually wanted to get it out more, the good work that they were doing. So we created these facade grant underway signs and you can see those in some of our buildings right now of the projects that have been completed. As you all are well aware, we did the historic district signage. So we did an installation and an educational campaign for those as well because we knew people would want to understand the repercussions and what it meant to be in a historic district. Was it more regulations or was it something that you could get community pride behind? We're actually, so if you see those signs, they look kind of small right now. They were going to be half the size of our initial street signage, but with some of the, the replacements and the scheduling, we have ordered bigger sizes and samples to see which one will work and move forward from there. So just to give you an idea, I said we thought we were going to be tapped of our, out of our facade grant budget. All the ones on the left are completed projects and I will show you some before and afters in just a moment of those. So under construction right now is 419 East Main and that's craze. As you see it, that's right next to 421 and 425, that whole redevelopment that was done. We have some pending applicants. This just basically means I'm waiting on more materials for them. And then we also have inquiries for grants. So just to highlight some of the achievements, this was one of the first ones we did this year. It was completed back in July, 121 East Main, and all of you know it as Yellow House. It was formerly the Wagner. You can see on the left, some of the work in progress and then the before and the after. So Elaine did a terrific job on that building and utilized our facade grant to do each of her sides of the building. Next, the one I had mentioned, the Shelton Building. You can see the before on the left, their plan that they brought to us, the work in progress photo where they had started on the right side, and the after photo. And so we have tenants calling probably on a daily basis interested in this property, which is incredible. Another one, this is actually one of our DDA board members and she opened her own art gallery and studio called Heart to Hands. Obviously, before is on the left, work in progress. And then you can see she changed it pretty dramatically as far as landscaping and now you see art there instead of these, these older window panes. So we're proud of that one as well. And then Chafellas, they did a complete repaint of their building. You can see on the left, it was an older yellow color, traditional for the architectural period of the time, but not so traditional for our times. So you can see what their plan was, the work in progress photos and the after. And if you've seen it in person, which I'm sure you have, it's beautiful, very clean and crisp. And 331 East Main, this is Lynn Austin's property, which many of you know. Lynn actually drew that picture, which I found humorous, but I loved it. But you could see it's work in progress on the left and then the after. She went in and redid some of the trim and repainted the entire building. But within that, because she was doing that, one of our tenants, one of our new gift shops, the Queen's Court, came in and redid their facade. So you can see what it looks like on the left and they just kind of made it pop with the colors that Lynn decided to go with for her entire property. So we'll move on to our Economic Vitality Committee now. Many of you know about our advocate program. It's literally how it sounds. We have volunteers that go out, they serve as liaisons just to say, we're here, you have any questions, we're handing you information, whether it's street closures or, hey, here's a seminar we want you to get involved with and we think it would help your business. So again, through that program, they're doing business education. We have a hundred and seventy-five businesses or more downtown, approximately a hundred and seventy-five, but many who work from home outside of the actual like business core. And so they went and engaged with all of those people. That's what we call the feet on the street programs, just trying to increase transparency and see what the needs of our business owners are. We also have a safe meetup spot at the police station that people have utilized, especially in the times of COVID during all of the online purchases. And they are also working in combination with our Joint Greenway Committee, which is our Parks and Rec, and then many outside stakeholders, and then many of our downtown development committees. So promotions, you probably saw this year, they were incredibly busy. One of, I'll just highlight a couple of these. One of the most things that we were proud of was a partnership with Flag. These ladies reached out to me on Facebook just through a simple message and they ended up, they raised over seventeen thousand dollars and it funneled twenty-two, or it funneled money into twenty-two of our locally owned small restaurants. What they were doing is going out, buying mills using donated funds and donating it front, frontline workers, which was just incredible. It also helped gain attention to our Facebook page because people loved it, which was great because any kind of educational pieces, whether it was COVID or stimulus information, more people were able to see that. One of the other things we were proud of is the downtown days. Essentially what we did, we put together bundles of gift cards. We did it at a discounted rate where the DDA used their own funds, bought these, put them into bundles, and then people could buy them. And so that was a huge success. We put, we infused over three thousand dollars back into our small businesses with that, not just restaurants. And so with that, I've kind of touched on most of these other things, like the social media growth. And again, thank you, Jody, for the helping us out with the Christmas tree lighting and storefront decorating, the DDA, and I'm sure the public really appreciates that. So in looking forward, this is just a very vast overview, but basically what they want to do is highlight the business success and resiliency. Not so much on how are we going to recover now, but how can we recover and be vibrant? And so one of the things that we're looking at is a Shop Clayton e-commerce site. So this is just a landing page where it essentially says, here are all of our great small businesses. And then you can click on their page, it'll take you to all of the items that they're selling. So also within that, the businesses that don't have websites, we want to do like SEO trainings, things like that, to get them on the web because clearly that's where purchases are being made right now. And then also the Greenway Trails connection. Through that, we're going to educate, leverage and, and try to bring additional pedestrian foot traffic downtown, which hopefully will end up helping our small businesses. So we need to go out and educate them on where exactly the connections are, build some of those maps and do promotion. And then this one, last but not least, this is under our Organization Committee. They're very excited to put Mayor Jody on a roof and have the community raise money to get him off as if it's a ransom. So they are excited to put that into motion or working on it right now. They've had to push it back a little bit, but this is something that we can do online and it's a lot of fun. We can partner with the schools and then raise money to then infuse back into our small business community.
And Jennifer, didn't they say they all want, they also wanted Chief Barbie on the roof?
They did. They wanted Chief Barbie and then they talked about Principal Bennett as well. So having them on three different roofs at the same time, you have to raise money to get them off, like ten thousand dollars to get Mayor Jody off of the...
Long day.
They can do things like purchase a blanket for them in case it's like thirty degrees outside like it is today.
Or coffee.
Yes. Exactly. So I know I kind of breezed through all of that, but any questions, I'm here and there's my contact information, but we're just really excited that you support the DDA and, and all the efforts that we're putting forward. And they work really hard. It, it's a, it's really inspiring to see these business owners that are struggling themselves, but come out to help the others because they know their neighbors are struggling as well. And that's all I have. Any questions, comments?
Questions or comments, Mr. Grantis.
Jen, I want to thank you and also Patrick and of course the DDA. It's, it's really reassuring to know that they're alive and pretty, pretty okay and that they're producing results, not only for the organization, but also for the, for the businesses. It's, to me, it's very reassuring and I, I would be shocked if, if the downtown businesses weren't very pleased with, with the results that the DDA and also the Economic Development Department are producing. So I want to thank you very much.
All right, anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to give kudos to the staff and to the group of DDA. I'm the ex-officio for the DDA Board, which means I sit in all their meetings. And I've never seen a group of professionals, they go for an hour and a half, almost like a council meeting, it goes so long sometimes. But they really do put forth the effort and I'd really like to speak, these two on the staff are kind of keeping the cats in, in the same line and they do a great job.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you both very much for all you do for our downtown development and town of Cloughan. All right, we have been in session for two hours and I am going to call for a fifteen-minute break.
Thank you.[1531.88]
All right, I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Up next on the agenda is informal discussion and public comment. If you're wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
List here, and the first person on our list is Edwin Aldrich.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilman, my name is Ed Aldrich. Eighteen years a citizen of Clayton and employed here in Clayton as well. Serving my fourth year on the Fire Advisory Board for Clayton, second year on Johnston County Economic Development Board, and a deacon in a local church here in the area. I've never been compelled to come forward and speak, but this issue has so moved me. I want to speak in support of the council's decision to move forward with making Mr. Solomon the permanent town manager. Mr. Solomon is a man of great character and true passion for our community. He's committed countless, countless hours to critical capital improvement projects, including the wastewater treatment plant. Yes, you did spend eighteen thousand dollars in search of a candidate, but in my humble opinion, I believe you did find the correct person for the job. Having over thirty years in the construction business, I can assure you that we would have spent well over twenty times that amount if we went in another direction with this position at this time. From the economic development front, it is paramount that we display a unified front on this issue. On that note, I pour each of you to put aside all of your political differences and pettiness unlike Washington DC and Raleigh, North Carolina, and unite behind Mr. Solomon for the good of our wonderful town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Denise Kettner. No, okay. Shirley Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Kelly, Mayor and Town Councilman. I come before you tonight as first. I'm a wife. I brought my husband because he probably didn't want to come, but I insisted that he did. I come before you as a mother, and I come before you as a professional. We live here in Clayton. We're transplants. I can remember when I first came to Clayton, it was a growing community. And we came here because my husband secured a job in neighboring county right down the road, Wilson County. And Clayton was going to be a commuter spot. I came here with anticipations of probably living in Clayton, bringing my kids up in Clayton, and driving into Raleigh to work every day because my background is in communications. I'm a trained journalist and had a change of career after I got to Clayton because they wanted the opportunities for me. So I went back to school and I got my certification to be an educator. I'm licensed to teach high school English. And since I got my license to teach high school English, I have not been hired in Johnston County as a teacher on a regular, permanent basis. I was hired for an interim position at Triple S High School several years ago. We made a home here. My kids graduated from Clayton High School. My oldest daughter sits on the wall in Johnston County School as an example of what an idea student looks like. And my twins graduated. They were both athletes at Clayton High School. They're now juniors in college at Hampton University. Our family is a strong believer in HBCUs. Both my husband and I graduated from HBCUs. I met him at HBCU. We're originally from South Carolina. I've had conversations around this board with all of you on the town council. I'm speaking from myself. And the reason I come is because I'm looking at where my kids are going to be. My twins tell me this is their home. When we moved here, they were students at Riverwood Elementary School in second grade. And for a lot of the time that we were here, I chose to be silent because I wanted my kids to grow up in a community that embraced them. But I had to be silent on a lot of issues. And they've told us that when they graduate from college, that this is probably going to be the place that they're going to live. And right now, I do not feel good about my kids graduating from college and saying that they want to come back and be in Johnston County. I know that my time up here is limited, so I'm going to try to move forward. I got several phone calls about the decisions that were made in the last county, at the last town council meeting, and that's when I decided that I was going to speak. I felt like I had been silent too long. I've been silent because I haven't been able to secure employment and have applied over and over again. I've been silent when they've called my kids the N-word at Clayton High School. I've been silent long enough. So why did I come? I heard terms like "good old boy," buddy system, transparency, all of that. And I would not have came if one of the town council members would have responded to my email. I wouldn't even be in here tonight. But I emailed, wrote a professional statement, and I wanted a response. Nobody responded. I sent another email to the PIO and asked specifically about the issue governing your decision to go ahead and move forward with making J.D. Solomon your new town manager. And I got a response, and I was not satisfied with that response. I brought copies of my email just as a note to tell you that I don't have any reason not to be truthful. I'm trained as a journalist, and what we do is tell the story. The story, the truth. And so we celebrated MLK yesterday, and I put on my Facebook picture. The first thing that I came across that made an impact on my heart to celebrate MLK yesterday that he said was, "The time to do right is all the time." And so your decision that you made and voted on four to one, I didn't think was what you should have done right. I teach my kids all the time about process and procedure. I teach them that because that's the world we live in. In the world that my kids, my three African-American daughters are growing up, who are professionally being trained. My oldest daughter is in MBA program at the University of Virginia, one of the top ten A schools for MBAs across the country, in some places across the world. Why? Because I want them to learn what policy and procedure looks like. If they decide to come make it to Johnston County or neighboring Wake County or neighboring Wilson County, I want them to know that the system is going to work for them. Mr. Solomon is credentialed, very much so. But Mr. Solomon, you should have followed procedure. I heard you tonight when you made your twelve comments about what your vision is for 2021, and I was kind of appalled because I did not hear you address anything in all of your twelve things. You didn't address anything about diversity and inclusion. I came in this room tonight, nobody came over here and spoke to me and my husband. We're sitting next to Mike Sims, who all of you know. Some of you know me, but you have not seen me in this capacity. I've had conversation with different town councilmen around this circle. And the conversation has came from a woman that has been silent. But I'm telling you, you have your priority lists for what you're going to do moving forward in Clayton. I even go back, I digress, but I go back to the issue because I ask, "How did you make the decision to hire him as your next town council?" And the statement that she wrote me back with clarity, she said, and I quote, "Thank you for asking for clarification. Although Mr. Solomon does not live within the Clayton Town Limits, he does live within the Clayton ETJ and has had a Clayton address for the past thirty years." That sounds like a politically correct answer. And what I've heard you all discuss last time was everything that was politically correct. So I went and did my homework. I looked up ETJ, did not even know what that term meant, got it from your website so I can know what it meant. And according to what I read, I'm not an attorney, I just did my research. He does not live within your ETJ. He does not. I did the MapQuest, and I wrote a note about that, too. From his house to downtown Clayton is two point two miles. Your own document says that, based on the municipality population, which I looked up to, twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-one people are estimated to be living in Clayton right now in the Town Limits. Based on this, his home is two point two miles away. It says ten thousand to two hundred, twenty-five thousand people has to be within two miles. Mayor McLeod, you made a reference during a meeting about the ordinance being outdated or whatever, or whatever they were going to make a decision that he could be the town manager. That's outdated, and according to this of how you're going to make him town manager or approve him town manager, it's outdated. So again, I go back to, the time to do the right thing is always the time to do the right thing. Follow policy, follow procedure, so that my three daughters, if they decide to move back and live in and around Johnston County and apply for a job, that the good old boy system will not keep them from being hired because they will be credentialed. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly, did you want to speak? Doritia Torciano.
Thank you for those comments.
Doritia, could I ask you to make sure that you clean that? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Doritia Torciano. I know many of you. For those of you I don't know, hello. First, I want to say, if you're unable to understand me with this mask on, please let me know. I will speak louder. I'm here to talk about, what was today, Article 7B on the agenda. I am sorry if my questions or statements might be a bit redundant to what was said, but I was out in the lobby, and the sound on the video was very poor, okay? I'm here just to talk about two issues. I'm interested in safety and parking. I know you did discuss it again. I could not hear. I find that it is very dangerous if you're driving up Church Street towards Main Street and you have to make a left turn. Most of the day, there is a lineup for church pickup, and I do understand that's necessary. However, I do ask that perhaps on the side of the church where people are lined up, that there should be at least two car lengths from the corner so that you'd be able to see to make a turn. Also, on the side of Church Street, sometimes they're just all the way on the end, that maybe that could be one car length, just so that people can see. I mean, that's really just to be safe because that is a very dangerous situation. So that is the first thing. The second thing is the parking. And I understand that that side of the street is supposed to become a loading zone. And I do understand that that's needed because the church, they have to have a place to pick up the children. But I'm wondering, how much of the day is that going to go on? Their school doesn't go on all day. I think it's only from nine to twelve. So wouldn't it be reasonable to have it from, say, eight to one and have the rest of the day have some parking? You know, at first, I did not hear that there would be like any specific hours because, as I said, I didn't know the times of days that the school was in session. So I was thinking, you know, maybe we have it, even if it's late, you know, have it from seven-thirty to nine-thirty and maybe three-thirty to five-thirty or something like that so that other people can park some of the time. And then I was worried that maybe it would be a loading zone all the time and that would take away parking for the businesses downtown that are open at night. So I do not know, you know, what you did vote on to do this evening, but I think those are really important issues. And so my question is, maybe you can tell me what was discussed and what you did vote on, and then I can let you know if I have more questions, but I could not hear.
All right. You can handle it.
I'll go back to whatever we're doing now to get everybody to agree was to look at it between now and by June fifteen to reevaluate. So we may take the loading zone off. We may change the hours, like you say. We may make it all non-parking. If we see a dangerous situation still there, we're going to do more. We'll bring people back out to the table, and we can make it all no parking on both sides of the street. I think Councilman Holder said that. But what we have agreed to do is to start here and then to adjust accordingly as we see how this first step goes.
Right, but I don't know what the start here is because I couldn't hear it.
It's to put a loading zone eight to five on the town side so that the town and the church people can't park on that side of the street, and we can enforce it. Now, we did talk about, and we did read your letter, by the way. How did you read your letter? I think you-
No, the other one from the neighborhood meeting. I wrote one for the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah.
I know that you read it. So you're saying that there'll be loading zone from eight to five, but will the loading zone start at least two car lengths back from the corner so that people can safely turn?
It's supposed to be no parking within thirty feet of the corner. So that should be-
Will there be a sign saying that?
It'll be a yellow-
Yellow marking?
No, it'll be the yellow marking because that's how we do it in all of Clayton. And so-
Okay.
If we need to do it again, I think, Rich, we can look at doing that. Your other point is a good one. We did talk about the different hours, about maybe having less hours or tighter ban. The trouble that we saw when we had PD out there, but how do you enforce that? We talked about striping the road. We talked about restricting. It gets to be a little bit of a management nightmare.
I know, but we do pay for police. We do pay out of our tax money to do have police. So that would be a little bit of police enforcement, and it wouldn't be out of the range of where the police travel because that's the only place really to travel to get across town, is Second Street. So there's a lot of going back and forth, and so if people were clearly there, it would not be such a big deal. So I don't know if I really like that response because we do pay tax money to have police help like that.
That's right. And we're just trying to make it an incremental step, really. And I don't know that everybody, anybody loved it, but we got a group of people together after several meetings.
Okay. But this is just for now. That's what you're saying, until we, okay.
It's for now. And if we see it's not working, we will change it, one way or the other.
Okay, well, I do hope that people stay back so that people can turn the corner. I mean, it's very, very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Sims. And Michael, if you could just make sure that you disinfect everything when you get up there before you speak. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, town council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Solomon. My name is, you said, is Michael Sims. I have been in the town of Clayton since 2000. Got two comments or statements that I'd just like to make. In the time that I've been, on the first one, since the time that I've been here in Clayton, a lot of you know me and know the things I've been involved in and things I've worked with a lot of you on different projects. But just a little bit on my background as a whole to understand on this first statement where it's coming from. A lot of you know, I served over twenty-one years in the United States Marine Corps. Nine months of that I spent in Iraq. From there, while I was in the Marine Corps, I got a bachelor's degree in aviation and a master's in business. From there, I worked for Pepsi for a long time in their corporate office as a senior county executive. From there, I went on to run a Walmart, the one in Lewisburg, for a few years with over two hundred and seventy-five employees, thirty-nine different departments, with a revenue of over sixty million dollars in that particular store for those years. Also, which is probably known to most of you, I've done a lot of different boards, Downtown Development Board, Downtown Development Association, was treasurer for two years. I currently serve the Clayton Recreation Foundation Board, and I could just keep going on and on and on. The reason why I make those statements is I understand leadership in all different aspects. And what took place January fourth was atrocious. Gentlemen, not the fact that, and Mr. Solomon, I'll be honest with you, up until tonight, even when I saw you on the video, I don't know you from sliced bread. So I have no issues with you whatsoever. You probably are the best thing since sliced bread. But the thing is, what we don't seem to understand is what certain things look like to the community, what certain things look like to the public, all right? We can call this petty, but at the same time, if an individual wants to see a process that takes place and anybody getting hired. So if it's just a thing where we just kind of say, "Hey, this is our person, and we're going to do this right here," on a person from the outside putting in an application and then going through a process kind of seems null and void if kind of things, as Ms. Kelly stated earlier, good old boyish where we just kind of put Mr. Solomon in. That's my first statement. I mean, that was an issue. That was a problem. Again, after you went through whatever process with Mr. Solomon, I have no problems whatsoever. But to understand that we're going to circumvent a process and not even do that, gentlemen, that's a problem. That's a problem. My second commenter statement is the fact that, you know, on January fourth, you know, and I don't know what you guys are going to do, you know, Lee Nuttis, but you talked about changing the ordinance to fit a person. You don't change the ordinance to fit a person. The person has to fit into the ordinance. I mean, where have we come to where we're even having a discussion about that? I actually find it kind of comical. It's going to be interesting to see what happens moving forward as far as him fitting in that ordinance and how you're going to fit it. I heard some comments from you and was it fourteen? I think it was fourteen, things that you laid out, which sounds really, really good and would love to see that, those things that you talked about. But my, again, my concern is the appearance of, when you get into certain positions in leadership, all right, you want to respect, and I would always say this, of your employees, of your troops, the people that you manage. Somehow, sometimes when you take positions a certain way, and that's my only concern with you, Mr. Solomon, is that I would have wanted to have been in that process just for some type of, and I'm going to say the word here, which everybody seems to know, is transparency. Again, I can, I say it again, and I apologize if I've said it too many times. You can be the best thing since sliced bread, Mr. Solomon. You know, you and I have never met and never had a discussion with you. I'm quite sure that you're a nice guy. But again, my only question and my statement is, I would just wonder why you would even want that under these circumstances because now you've already created a cloud that people are looking at. How do you know that? The average views on the town council meetings is around, averages around three hundred. The last time I checked, there were over sixteen hundred views on that town council meeting. It wasn't because, "Hey, all right, we got Mr. Solomon in here, let's go check out the video." It wasn't because of that. It's because of things that have taken place. And if you guys as council don't understand that, don't understand that, then we've lost something with Clayton. I love Clayton. Again, a lot of you guys know, I've served immensely on a lot of different things with Clayton, all right? But when we start to get to a point, and believe me, I understand that there are certain things that happen behind the scenes that people don't understand in leadership. I know that, all right? But when you make those decisions, you also have to make the decision in what do we have to look at or do from a transparent standpoint. Again, gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Solomon, I wish you the best in your position, and that's all I had to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michael.
And up next, Barry Woodard. You could just make sure that you sanitize before you go. Thank you.
My name is Barry Woodard, lifelong Claytonian. I've served on multiple committees over a thirty-year period. But as I was talking to Michael earlier, I've stepped aside over the last several years, and I've not been as involved. And I just want to say I appreciate what Michael has done to make Clayton a better place. And for you to have compassion for this town is one reason why people like Michael volunteer and do what they do to make this community great. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to briefly talk about a few things past. So twenty-three years ago, a man named Steve Biggs called me up and came into my office. And he said, "I want you to chair the Downtown Development Association." And I said, "Well, what is that?" And he said, "It's something that we need to do to get downtown regenerated." And he said, "I've seen it done before." He said, "I want you to go with me up to downtown Raleigh, to Old Raleigh, and have lunch." I can't recall who was in that group. Might have been you, Jody, I'm not sure. But we went up to Greenshills, and we had lunch, and there was probably seven or eight people in that group. And he said, "This may not be Clayton," he said, "but it has, Clayton has that potential to have a city market, to have a main street that's vibrant." Because at that time, we know there was not much there. And I'm going to say this, Steve Biggs was a visionary, and he had a lot of fortitude. And he didn't necessarily do things to make friends. He made some tough decisions, some that I didn't agree with, some you probably didn't agree with. But ultimately, you worked together, and you came up with a solution. And look at what we have. I mean, this town is amazing right now. We've come, we're a destination. People want to be here now. It's on the map. Whether we can stop it or slow it down or redesign it, we're here, and it's a matter of moving forward. And that's what I want to talk about a little bit. Clayton's future is so important right now because we're at a point where we're not a small town anymore. And we're really not even a mid-sized town. We're a big town. I mean, we're borderline city. And at the rate we're growing, we're going to be carry apex one day, whether it's in my lifetime or our kids' lifetime. But those of us who grew up here, and there are several in this room, we know where we've come from, and we know how we got there. And we know there's been a lot of sacrifices. As you look at the walls of different council people. And Mr. Mayor, I applaud you because you've done it since ninety-three. I mean, you're about three or four years younger than me, but you've done it since you were very young. And you've given a lot of time, and that's admirable, and I appreciate it. And you and I have never always agreed on everything, but that's okay. You can't always agree on everything. It's good to have constructive, you know, comments and constructive criticism. And that's the only way you're going to ever improve is to figure out what mistakes you've made and improve on them. And JD said something earlier about culture. You know, Clayton's got a unique culture. It's not a carry. It's not an apex. I mean, it's a diverse group of people who grew up here, people who've moved here, and people who have invested here, and people who love it here. And there's only so many that are willing to sacrifice that time and effort to volunteer to make Clayton what it is. And so I'm here tonight to support JD. I've known him for thirty years. I've not agreed with him on a lot of things. He actually did something a long time ago he probably don't even remember. When we did a project, and he made me pave a parking lot. And every parking lot in Clayton was gravel. You and Tommy pulled. Yeah. And really, you know, that took me back a little bit. I'm going, we got the only parking lot we got to pave in Clayton, everything- I'm going, we got the only parking lot we gotta pave in Clayton, everything's gravel. But then I got to thinking about it, you know, he's got a vision, just maybe like Steve Biggs. And while Stephen and I didn't always agree, he moved forward. And that's what I think tonight is about, is moving forward and having the right direction and the right leadership. And I know you've proven yourself, and I know this council's proven itself. And while we don't always agree with the process, and I don't know the process, I applaud the effort, and that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
That is it on the list. I do have two comments that I've received from citizens that I would like to, they've asked that I read into the record. The first comment is from citizen John Cristiano, and here is his email. It reads, "I would like to see an objective and professional process followed in the selection of the town manager. The motions to appoint Mr. Solomon outside of that process seems both opportunistic and privileged. If he wants the job, he should have applied and been considered on his merits along with other candidates. Regarding the residency requirement for the town manager, this absolutely must remain as a condition of employment. I do not want anyone managing our community who is not subject to the consequences of their actions as a resident. This idea also reeks of favoritism, exposing a conflict of interest on the part of the person persons making the motions. Sincerely, John Cristiano." And we'll make this part of the record. Thank you. Public comment number two, and it's pretty lengthy, so. "Good evening, Town Council. I am making these comments as a concerned resident of downtown Clayton. Before I begin my points, I would like to thank Ms. Moffett for reading my comments. I am unable to attend council meetings in person, and I appreciate the opportunity for my concerns to be read during the public comments portion. My points and concerns are as follows. Number one, the hiring of JD Solomon as town manager. As all of you are well aware, there has been quite a stir surrounding the abrupt removal of Adam Lindsay, the wise, his severance, and his legacy. Citizens of Clayton voiced their opinions on this last year, and also voiced their opinions on the salary of then interim town manager Solomon. $24,000 per month is a steep, uncommon, and grotesque salary for anyone working for a town of this size. On Monday, January 4th, 2021, it was decided with a four-to-one vote that Mr. Solomon would be made the new town manager with a salary of $196,000. Point A: Will the $24,000 Mr. Solomon has been given per month be taken out of his total salary of $196,000 since he, since he up and decided to want the job last minute? Or will town citizens be paying this on top of his payments as interim town manager? Point B: The decision to hire him as you did is a disgrace, plain and simple. With the controversy surrounding this decision, the town should have followed the rules and laws to the letter, leaving no stone unturned and leaving no space for doubt among town of Clayton residents or staff. Instead, you chose to hand him the job. You have forever sullied his reputation, or even the belief in his true possibilities or his qualifications, which lead to point number two. Point number two, illegal meeting of some members of town council. General Statute 143-318 and General Statute 153A-40 in North Carolina law have very specific rules in regards to how council can call different types of meetings, from your regular meetings to emergency meetings to closed sessions. Point A: I would like to request to know when an illegal, illegal meeting was held that excluded Councilman Everett and Mayor McLeod to discuss the hiring of Mr. JD Solomon. Please do explain. Point number three, request for repayment of $18,000 firm fee to be repaid by council members Bun, Thompson, Holder, and Granis. I am requesting that the four of you split the cost of the firm fee to find a new town manager, and that it be docked from the money you receive from the town to serve on council. That is $4,500 per member. Point number four, former chief of police, Mr. Blair Myhand. Town citizens have been practically begging to know exactly what happened with Chief Myhand, and council has provided no answers. A week or so ago, Mr. Myhand spoke in his own words in the Hendersonville lighting, lightning, excuse me, regarding his bid to become their next chief of police. He has since been made their new chief of police. Point A: I would like to request an answer from town council, given the words he said about a baseless and fruitless investigation against him. Point B: I would also like to know when it was decided that the chief of police is expected to subjugate himself to members of town council and town staff, when his clear job is to be a public servant, run his law enforcement agency, and lead good officers. Last time I checked, chief of police is loyal to his citizens, not obscene bureaucracy or the bloated egos of council members or town staff. Chief Myhand had a stellar reputation in this community on all sides. Point C: I would like to know the cost of this investigation, and which budget line sets aside money for this investigation. Five, challenging the town ordinance that requires town manager live here. The town ordinance 31.03 states, "At the time of his appointment, he need not be a resident of the town or state, but during his tenure of office, he shall reside within the town. Discussion was had in regards to changing the town ordinance because Mr. Solomon does not live in Clayton. I believe changing this law to suit a town staff member sets a very negative precedent for the future of town decisions, and I believe the law should absolutely stand, and Mr. Solomon should be required to move here. If he does not do so, he should be removed." Number six, decorum of council meetings. "I feel it necessary to issue a reminder that town council is a nonpartisan entity. When we vote for you, we put aside party lines and politics for the good of the town." Point A: I am requesting that town manager JD Solomon be reminded of this fact. Every meeting, he finds some way to make political comments that are not only unprofessional, they are inappropriate. I am well aware, he is the former head of the Johnston County Republican Party, but he is now town manager, and his political comments have no place in council meetings. Number seven, outreach plan and guidelines for recruitment and selection of minority businesses. Point A: How was the 10% determined? B: What are the, what are the statistical data points that support offering an insulting low 10% to minority-owned businesses? C: For town jobs that fall below the specific monetary threshold, what percentage of those are given to minority-owned businesses? An equal share would have been a guarantee of 50%. If you remember, we ran out of water. That quote made by interim town sa- town manager Solomon is from the last town council meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2021, timestamp 2/17/42. Point A: Are you referencing drinking water or wastewater? B: This is not the first time it has been said by Mr. Solomon, so I am wondering why no one is questioning such a serious statement in regard to the town's resources. C: If the town is at a vital capacity for water, why does the town continue to approve residential development, other than the obvious desire for the millions you'll make off it? D: In Chapter 54, Clayton Town Ordinance, the town manager at his own will is permitted to adjust rates if there is deemed to be a water shortage of emergency. Knowing this, I am incredibly worried about the overdevelopment of the town and the stress on our infrastructure, and then knowing that due to the town's unchecked growth, that rates can be raised for a problem residents are not causing. Greed is what is causing these problems. In closing, I want to say that the actions of some elected officials recently are not only deplorable, they are inexcusable. You are elected officials who sit where you do because Clayton citizens cast ballots entrusting you with their homes, their families, and their tax funds. I find it a shame to listen to town staff and town elected officials brag about the financial growth this town is having, while lines at churches for food have doubled and tripled, and families are struggling to pay their bills during this pandemic. I find it a shame to listen to town staff and town elected officials brag about this financial growth while later questioning if you can even support the hard-working town staff who end up with COVID and need time off, worrying about revenue versus cost. While you pay the interim manager, town manager $24,000 per month, you paid a firm to find a new manager $19,000, paid an undisclosed amount to have the chief of police investigated, while you approved a grotesque salary of $196,000 to the interim town manager when he becomes town manager. And while you paid the former town manager a severance package of a full-year salary, I am astounded by the blatant disregard for even taxpayer funds, especially considering the median salary of the most fam- salary of most of the families who call Clayton home. May you do better. To Councilman Everett and to Mayor McLeod, I publicly apologize on behalf of your fellow council members for the disrespect you were given. You are both doing your jobs as you were elected to do them, and I appreciate you. Thank you again to Ms. Moffett for reading my words and for the time given for public comment. Candace Mosley Russell. The only comments that I've received that have been asked to be read into the record.
Alright. Anyone else that wished to speak that did not get the opportunity to do so? Alright, then we'll move on to council comments.
So, first thing I want to kind of, um, address, um, and make, make sure people are aware of, this was not a, a political stunt. This is not for me to, you know, stir up anything. This was just, I wanted the process to go through. As we said before, JD, as I, as I said January 4th, I think you're awesome, and I still stand by that today. I think you are absolutely amazing. And if the process would have went through, more than likely, we, you would still be sitting in that chair. That is, but the main reason why I did want the process to go through, it was because of perception and how our community sees us. I know that we've heard comments saying, mostly comments that, of people that know JD for 30-plus years. There's a lot of people that don't know JD. So outside looking in, it looks sketchy. I'm not saying that it is sketchy, it looks sketchy. So I do want to clean that up a little bit. Also, I really wasn't going to say, you know, too much at this meeting, um, but in light of a JOCO report that did come out just recently, um, that all four of the council members decided to sign off on, um, I do want to address my participation. I do want to say that I'm, I'm, this is my first year, okay, on, on this council. Okay, so I've been 100% present to council meetings, closed sessions, um, in council retreats, and whenever we do have them, I make sure I am completely available. So we have plenty of time there to talk about anything we need to talk about in a transparent manner in public. Um, I feel like, you know, if we would have had that conversation together, then you guys would know where I stand on that. But instead, I find out, you know, you, you feel some kind of way in a JOCO report. And when I do ask for feedback, these are the things that I'm looking for. I mean, you know, if you feel like I need to, you know, engage with you a little more, then say that, but don't tell me I'm doing fine, and then, you know, there's a letter to citizens. And that letter didn't even really explain why $18,000 was spent. Um, and so at the end of the day, for me, that letter was just distasteful, and, and it was petty for me. Also, in regards to why I was, I felt like I was left out of the meeting, two members of council can request a special meeting. I really don't know why a special meeting was, needed to be requested, seeing that, you know, we've, you know, we met during closed session and we came up with a decision then. And so, you know, kind of having a conversation about a special meeting, I'm like, okay, so what happened in that moment that we needed to call a special meeting? For them to bring me into the loop of why they decided to flip and go the other direction. I'm not here to start anything. I'm, I'm here for Clayton, I'm here for the residents, this is why I sit on this board. For 16 years, whether I've been on this council board or not, I have always been a, I, I love people, and so I spend a lot of time with people. So that is my voice, you know? These are concerns that are coming from citizens and from me myself, because I am a citizen as well, and I'm still fairly new. So if you guys have any constructive criticism for me, you know, this, these are things we can't talk about in private, or we can, you know, go forward and see what we can do to move Clayton forward. But I don't want, you know, comments between us, and then next thing you know, when I'm not here, there's, you have issues, or if, if there's something you need to comment about. So I do want to, I didn't want to really say that on a Facebook message where I kind of saw the JOCO report, I would rather do this right here in a public setting, because I feel like that was more professional to do it that way. But that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Holder.
I want to clear the air a little bit. When we had our closed session to discuss JD, it was apparent that most of us wanted him to be the permanent manager. But several of you wanted him to go through the hiring process, and we left that meeting with that in mind. In discussions with JD, he did not want to do that. Four-to-one vote, and we decided that in one-on-one conversations, there was no secret meeting. It was all one-on-one in making that decision. Four-to-one, we felt like that JD would be the best person to lead us. Not only that, you heard his list of things. He has quite a few initiatives he started that needed to continue. And I spend a lot of time thinking about what's gonna happen down the road, not what's happening today. And the four of us decided the best way to go was to hire JD. The issue of the, of the ordinance, we haven't settled that issue. We have not made any change to an ordinance. We have not brought that before. We're still discussing that. Somehow, Mr. Solomon may have to come into the town one way or another. It could be annex, it could be moving. Uh, that would put him under the town tax base, but that does not mean he has, he feels all the burden. You could have a council that five members were renting, and therefore they were not paying any taxes to the town. That's not the case right now, but it could, could happen. So I feel very confident that the four of us made our decision based on what we see the need for town of Clayton for the future. My understanding of the process, it does not say we've got to follow step, step, step. It says that we have to seek a replacement for the town manager. We seeked, we made a decision, and we went with it. That's all I got to say. And I, and the lady, I'll be glad to talk, to so with you anytime you want to, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Holder.
Um, Mr. Mayor, can, I just want to make just one thing about that. Just because you, okay, let me take this off. Just because you can't do it doesn't always mean you should. Why, for us to even look at changing an ordinance, why are we even trying to even work on changing an ordinance? That's, I think that's where we are. I think we're missing the point of what's going on right now. We don't really have to follow the process, but $18,000 was spent, and 196 for a salary. I mean, that's, this is going to be an ongoing thing, so it's not about, it's not really all about what you feel, it's about what your citizens feel, and going with what kind of, I mean, they have a heavy, they should have heavy weight on majority of things that we think about. And that, I mean, that's where I'm at, you know? I'm not, you know, trying to like say, oh, you're just dead wrong. I'm definitely not trying to say that, but from a standpoint, or I'm trying to get in a, just being just a citizen, just kind of looking at this, I mean, that just sounds politically correct, and it's just like one of those things where, ugh, you know? So I, I totally get where you're standing, you know? I, like I said, I think JD is going to be a great town manager, um, going forward. I'm going, you know, after today, we're going to just go ahead and move forward with what we've decided to do. But I mean, you guys know, I, I do not agree with this process, but also I do want you to understand that a lot of people are upset with, during a pandemic, that we're just a waste, I, I feel like, you know, in their opinion, that we're wasting money. And I mean, that's, that's where we at, I, I don't think it's about the accomplishments, accomplishments of JD, because everything I've heard, even from people that oppose it or for it, they like JD, either way. So it's not like something, you know, like I said, this is not political, this is not, you know, I'm trying to stir up a mess or get, you know, people off council, this is just, I'm just telling you my thoughts. I mean, this is what we're here for, is to discuss thoughts and talk about them, and debate, and then come to a common ground. But let's do that. But let's do that, you know, so.
I want to clear the air on another issue. The $18,000 keeps coming up, but my understanding, the actual invoice was under $10,000.
The first payment was, the total was about $15,000, because he didn't finish the work.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Eighteen keeps being thrown around.
Yeah.
Let's be accurate.
The first, the first two payments were 12, and he said he had done enough work, even though he didn't complete the last third, that he feels like he's entitled to half of that. And I'm not going to contest that. I mean, he's a professional, and he knows what he's put into it. So if it's 15, it's 15.
And we're not inclined to change the ordinance. At least I'm not, and I've heard other councilmen make the same statement. So we're still wrestling with that issue. It's not a done deal.
Okay, well, just because of January 4th, you know, when you did say, you know, we'll take care of it, that kind of.
It was just a reference.
Okay, I mean, you know, so then we can talk about that and have a discussion. But you need to be a little bit more elaborate when you're saying things like that, because, like I said, people can take it a certain way. And after that January 4th meeting, everyone felt some kind of way. So no matter what you think is how your citizens are looking at this council chambers right now, and they do not like what they see. No matter if it was $1 or $15,000, you're wasting taxpayer money because of somebody you felt comfortable with to put in that position. So like I said, we, when I said, after my comments, I said, let's pull this for further discussion. These are the things we could have talked about later on in a closed-session meetings, the right way. So that's how I personally feel about that, and I think that's how citizens feel about that. So I stand by what I said January 4th, and I'm still standing on what I've seen now.
Thank you both. Anyone else? Mitch Thompson.
There's been a lot of conversation in the last couple of weeks about transparency. And I do think to a lot of people's comments, we've not been transparent. And I think we could have done a better job of that. And we, as, the Clayton Council has traditionally tried to keep our dirty laundry close at hand and, you know, portray a sense of decorum and unity and always make the right decisions for the town of Clayton. And, you know, the only exception, the biggest exception I took was the accusation at the last meeting that we had some kind of a secret meeting. And Avery, you say that the citizens are upset because of what they saw at the last meeting. What they saw at the last meeting was an accusation of something that wasn't true, and we didn't rebut it. And I think that was probably our fault for, you know, not in the open session saying that there was no meeting.
Right.
And I'm sorry that that's the way it came across. And I think we, I've been getting a lot of citizen comments thinking that because of that statement, that there was a secret meeting and there was no meeting.
Well, I do want to say this, is that, you know, when I did make this, I said something happened outside of that meeting. So as I said, I don't, I'm not sure what happened, but there was a reason for why we needed to call a special meeting that all four of you kind of just decided to vote on that.
I understand.
You know, I'm not saying like, oh, you guys are doing certain things. I'm just saying, like, after that closed-session meeting, I had the mindset of we were going to go through the process. And then next thing I know, you know, we're supposed to be calling a special meeting. That special meeting was never called. And to, you know, to kind of to Jody's point, I mean, you know, it's not only Jody that could have called that meeting. So that meeting was supposed to be to bring me into the loop of why everything was happening. So, you know, I don't want people to think, you know, you guys are breaking the law or anything. I just want them to know, like, something happened.
That's the way it was portrayed, and that's what all of our citizens were telling us. But besides that, since I do have the floor, I've worked in emergency services for almost 30 years. I qualify as an expert witness in a court of law on emergencies. And I feel like the decision that we made to put JD in office permanently was out of necessity, because in my eyes, we were facing an emergency. Within a week or two of JD being in office, we've asked for the last three years of our previous Town Manager for accurate numbers of our water capacity and our wastewater capacity. And we've got different numbers presented to us, it seems like every two weeks, and we've not had any solid answers. And within a couple of weeks of JD being appointed, we actually had some solid answers. And one of them was, we're out of water. And we've had to work through that and, you know, emergently direct the erection of a water tank and an agreement for storage with an entity. It was also brought to our attention that our AMI meter project was about $700,000 over budget. That's three-quarters of a million dollars, folks. That was over budget that our previous Town Manager did not alert us to, bring to our attention, or make us aware of. That's $700,000 of taxpayer money that we were over budget. That, to me, is an emergency. Our bond referendum that the taxpayers and our citizens voted on for the Parks and Recreation Bond was sitting still. That was at risk of failure. The estimates for the projects were way off. Financing costs had not been fatted in. There was a lot of things that were not working with that. And Mr. Solomon got us back on track with that. Facilities, we heard that. There was no plan for these facilities that are aging of how to keep those up. And one thing I want to say is, I had invoices pulled. In the last five years, we used an outside consultant three different times to hire for executive-level positions. We spent about $18,500 each of those times. Two of the three are no longer with us. So I say to that, we're elected. The town's like a company. We're the Board of Directors, and our manager is the CEO. When a company needs to change the CEO, they do that. They don't always go out on some big selection process. They don't always hire consultants. Sometimes they know the right fit for that position immediately. We didn't know that until he hit the ground running. But I can say, as an elected official, my perception is we've got more accomplished in three months with Mr. Solomon than we had in three years with our previous manager. And the things that we have going on right now, we can't afford to push pause for six months to get somebody else up to speed. And I feel like that we're at a critical juncture, and that's why I supported the decision. I was the first one in closed session to say, I think you ought to go through the process. But after conversation with Mr. Holder, I said, you know, what are our options here? And I felt it was more important to keep our stability and somebody who's mitigating us through this tough and trying time and cleaning up from the past three years of management than to push pause and bring in somebody brand-new and have to spend six months to a year to get them up to speed and risk our bond referendum not being handled appropriately, risk running out of water, risk more budget overages that we were not aware of from previous management. And so that's why I feel that it's important. And maybe, as an elected official, we should have been more transparent with this stuff, because this is serious business. But we've always tried to keep those kind of things close at the cuff, make the right decisions in public and walk forward. But I've heard pretty clearly from the citizens over the last couple of weeks that they want more transparency. And that was it. You know, that's the transparent reasons why I felt like we needed to make the decision we made. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else?
All right, then I'll finish up. First of all, I want to thank the citizens of the Clayton for the tremendous amount of support that I have been shown over the last two weeks since our last Town Council meeting. I've been the mayor of Clayton for 17 years, a position that I hold really near and dear to my heart. And I never knew I had as much support in my role as mayor that I have. And to find that out is extremely humbling. And it still creates a strong focus for me to keep the eye on the prize, and that prize is what's best for Clayton. So thank you for your support. And I never dreamed that Jody McLeod had that kind of support. But I thank you for it. And it's going to make a difference in my leadership moving forward, because I have that self-assurance and self-confidence that I look out for the people of Clayton. And I have the strongest pulse on what the community and the townspeople are thinking. That's how you know if you're a strong mayor, you know. You're not a strong mayor if you don't know what the majority of people are going to think or feel. And when you have that relationship, that creativity, that connection with people as a leader, that's when you always know that. There are so many things that I could talk about right now. But the two most important that need clarification are based on the letter that the four of you sent to the JOCO report. The first clarification that needs to be known by the public and for the record is that it was written that the mayor refused to hold a closed session or hold a special meeting. And that's probably extremely true, because I said, I'm not having anything to do with this. But Councilman Thompson and Councilman Grantis knew, based on conversations with the town clerk, that they could call a special meeting if they wanted to. You don't have to have the mayor to call a special meeting. The point of that special meeting would have been able to bring in Councilman Everett to the loop, but they chose not to hold a special meeting. The second clarification I want to offer is that it was implied and stated that the mayor sets the agenda. And while that might be a strong practice that is across the state of North Carolina with municipalities that have council manager former government, it is not the process here at the town of Clayton for the last 17 years, because we have a staff who is strong enough to know what needs to be brought to the attention of this council and time-wise what needs to be, have action taken on it. So the mayor does not, nor has he ever, set an agenda. Council members have the ability to have anything placed on the agenda, just like they have the ability to remove anything that is on an agenda. But the mayor does clearly not. And JD can tell you, and Kimberly can tell you, the mayor has never set the agenda. So I just think it's important to clarify that. Those are the two of my primary points that needed clarification in addition to my appreciation of the state's poor of support. You know, we do have to move forward. I think the biggest question from citizens right now is it almost looks as if the Town Council has allowed the tail to wag the dog, because you've appointed a man to a position, given him a job, without working out the details. And of course, you can work out the details, but those details, just like the detail of his salary, just like the detail of his vacation days, just like the details of his severance package, the detail of whether he should abide by the ordinance that has been in effect since 1981, and I do not believe that ordinance needs to change, because it is a best practice in municipalities, 90% of those who participate in the council manager former government in the state of North Carolina. I don't believe that needs to change. So I think that's been, the biggest question is, you know, you appointed this guy, and now you're going to have to go back and figure out how to, you know, work the ordinance to make it so he can do what you want him to do. I told JD to his face, and I will tell you to the camera and for the record, you know, I know he's going to be a good manager for the town of Clayton. I know he's got the skill sets to do it. He still should have applied for the job. That's the bottom line, and we still should have followed the process, because we were just thinking that we didn't need to bring somebody on, and it takes six months to get them up to speed, because we would have had the candidate that would have best served Clayton. So that's all of the comment that I have on this. I thank you for your service to the town of Clayton. And if there's nothing else to come before this council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Good night.